Can I have a leave this now, please, if we want to start our time this morning? So everyone will rise for our prayer. I have the honor, thank you for the opportunity to come to this house today. Thank you for the many lessons you have received on this county as well as each individual in here. We ask that you give us wisdom and sermon as we go about the county's business and as we think about the broader picture in this world. Help us figure out a way to live in peace with all the men. All these things we ask in thy name before I say amen.
Amen. Quite the leaders, quite the United States of America, and to your God for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for coming. It looks like we have a little time today. First item on the agenda is approval of amendments for January 7th, January 20th, and January 20th special session. Are there any corrections to the amendments?
As Chairman, there's several typos, kind of toys. Page fifteen ninety-six. Second paragraph, should be she was.
Fifteen one.
Fifteen ninety, just a typo there. Paragraph after Chair Hoppa called for five minutes says, that fifth line down, just strike the letter A, the whole formula. First paragraph, third line, should be continue to, that letter A, that word two.
Any additional? Do I have here a motion to approve the amendments as corrected for January 7th, 2015, January 20th, 2015, and with special session on January 20th, 2015?
A motion.
Motion's been made, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, the amendments are approved as corrected. Adjustments to the agenda, there are a couple to add under old business at a number nine. Oh, first of all, we want to eliminate number seven, EMS, NCACC application. Please mark through that. And add, well, I guess we could add it as number seven, discussion on the concrete building in the back. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Someone, second.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. We have delegations, Luther Ronald Dunning, a nice delegation, for citizens' comment or commentary.
Jack, you turned this thing off. That way off. I was getting ready to tell Jack a joke and he remembered to turn this off. We've got so many distinguished people here today, I first decided that I was going to maybe reserve the right to come back and answer any questions. However, my point today is about, we've still got a problem with our water department and the way we shut people's water off. And I'd like to ask these commissioners, y'all, I have a long email, about three pages, that fully explained my position. I don't really need to repeat that too much, but I do, for the sake of the record, want to say that it started with Kirk Hoffler. And I realize some people don't even know, in parts of the county, don't even know who that Kirk Hoffler is. And he spells his name with two F's, so don't confuse him with the Livers family. But quickly, the family history of the Hofflers and Bosley was one of the most outstanding families in this community that's ever been. Kirk's granddaddy and daddy, if I had a hundred thousand dollars to leave with somebody for safekeeping, I would give it to David Hoffler and feel perfectly safe. When I came back, I'd have a hundred thousand dollars. Great family, pay a lot of taxes in this county. The history reason I'm here today, and you all will know it, but the public does not know it, they turned Kirk Hoffler's water off. Now, one part of that that I think that you probably know, if you don't know, you're gonna know when I finish. Kirk's daddy, David, and Kirk sit there and watched them turn the water off. And Kirk asked them, "What are you doing?" And they said, "We're gonna turn your water off." He said, "What's the problem?" He said, "You didn't pay your water bill." Kirk said, "I didn't pay my water bill. Look, if I didn't pay my water bill, I'd go to the gates and pay my water bill." They said, "No, we're gonna lock and cut your water off." You mean I can't go pay my water bill and you leave it on? No. Well, this, I'm not here today because David Hoffler, Kirk Hoffler, anybody asked me to come. Y'all all know me either as a troublemaker or political advocate, but I feel very comfortable with being here and thinking we need to revisit this. I was never satisfied with this idea of going out here and turning people's water off, just turning it off, even though I knew y'all say you've got a rule of cause. Kirk Hoffler was never called. They said they couldn't get up with Kirk Hoffler. There was fifty people in Sunbury that could got up, either with Kirk or his wife who works in the insurance office. I could've told them how to get up with him. I could've give Kirk's phone number. It was never done, and I think it was a bad thing to happen. And the reason I point all this out quickly, and I never quickly, is it was Kirk Hoffler. It's not because he was somebody special, not because he paid a lot of money to this county. It was because it illustrates what I have been trying to say for a long time, and that is a fact, that if they could make a mistake on Kirk Hoffler, they could make a mistake on a chicken house. They could make a mistake on a hog farm. They could make a mistake on a sick little old lady somewhere. We just got to, I realize this, and to me, the call is a call to the alamo, remember Kirk Hoffler, because I want you people to go back, look at this as a wake-up call, go back and revisit it. Now, I'm not, my information that I have comes from Kirk Hoffler and the family. If I'm wrong, I'm just saying that the county manager and other people may have a different story, and I'm sure they were listening to it. The first thing that I was told was that the policy was not gonna be changed. Well, I think any policy can be changed. You five gentlemen here, four gentlemen and ladies, have the authority to change it. And I think it's something that we need to be looking at. And there's a little side thing, he is a history teacher over here, but this is the eight-hundredth year, the eight-hundredth year of celebration of the Magna Carta. Now, all of you who went to school probably don't remember, because we studied about that in elementary school, the Magna Carta. Eight hundred years old, but the whole start of this was protecting of our individual freedoms, eight hundred years ago in England. Quickly, I want to say that many of you remember Mr. Tauswell, he served the county, he was a finance, a registered D's, finance officer, the county clerk to the board, and so he did it all for many years. But on many occasions, I saw Mr. Tauswell, maybe at least three occasions, tell the commissioners, said, he was always one in the room, and all the commissioners were men, and he called them boys, he said, "Boys, you remember, you worked for the citizens of this county." I'm the first to realize, I am the first to go on the record to say, to the water department, to the county manager, I know it's hard, you always in business are gonna have problems with certain people who do not want to pay their bills. I know that, I've been that way, I'm old, I seen it, I know you got a problem. But we've got to work this thing out so that we don't go out here and turn all people's water off who have no history of not paying their bills, who have reason not to, no reason to turn it off. And I think that it's very important that we go back and revisit this. And I have sent y'all all emails on it, and I will quickly reiterate my opinion on it. And what is this? That we can simply go back to the days where we gave a month's grace period. It was brought to my attention that that didn't work before, because they said that people would come in and pay that early in the month, and Sandy is here, she knows a lot about this, but then it wouldn't pay the month due. Now, I'm not familiar with all the legal aspects of this, but I do feel like that we should have it in place so that if you missed a month and you got the second month before we turn it off, you had to pay all we did debt. And I think that should be, but I'm not a lawyer, I don't run the legal stuff, but Sandy and county manager had to work that out, and it turned. But anyway, it's not gonna cost the county very much money, but we have county employees to go out to a person's house, prominent citizen, big taxpayer, and it doesn't make any difference whether you're a big taxpayer or someone who's living in a rented house. It's all the same if your water's being turned off. But we've got to be reasonable. We cannot have unreasonable people out here, and the amount of money that the county is gonna lose is really minuto, stool, back up on that word, to the amount of money that the county's budget is. I realize that we got to collect the money. If we don't collect the water bills, we'd be like Detroit. And if you followed Detroit, well, the whole city of Detroit's going to hell, but they, people aren't paid as good paying the water bills, and they didn't know how to collect them. But we're not gonna let that happen. I'm sure Sandy and everybody else is behind the fact that we're gonna collect our water bills. But we need to be, understand that this water department is not your water department, it's our water department. And we got to work and be somewhat friendly toward our customers whenever possible. I hope that you would think that we would go back and revisit this for the benefit of everyone, especially the elderly people who may forget to pay their water bill, to the sick people who may be in a house sick, forget to pay their water bill, and I just, I just know that, me, I just see that, you know, you coming in here and you got a person in there sick in the house, and the county just goes in and purposely puts a lock out there and don't even try to go out their way to contact these people and find out what's wrong. At least tell social services and says, "Look, we got to get this water, keep this water on with the city, our livestock, children in houses." And we need to make a reasonable effort to contact these people, and I mean a good effort, before we go out here and cut these people's water off. I am very adamant about this, and I'm gonna stay with it, and I hope that you commissioners can understand this problem, and we solve it within the next few months and whatever you have to do. But thank you very much for my time, and I am not the kind of person to let little things like this die, you know that.
Thank you, Mr. Rattrick, for your comments. Anyone else on the list? Okay. We'll move on to a nice delegation. We have a delegation from the Department of Defense, so we'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. My name is Serena Eitler, and I'm the Compatible Use Program Director with the Office of Economic Adjustment in the Office of the Secretary of Defense. And I'm here today to provide you a very brief overview of our Compatible Use Program. And the reason why I'm here is our office received from the Navy in spring of 2014 a nomination to consider naval support activity Hampton Roads Northwest Annex in Chesapeake, Virginia, and also North Carolina, as a candidate for our Joint Land Use Study Program. And I have here with me today three other representatives that are available to answer your questions that you might have after I provide my brief presentation. I have Captain Jake Johansson, who's the installation commander. I have Mr. David Peoples, who's with the Assistant Secretary of Commerce for North Carolina Rural Development. And I also have William Defoe, who serves as the Community Plan Liaison representing the installation. The reason why the Navy nominated the installation for consideration as a joint, for a Joint Land Use Study project is they have concerns about two main issues that might potentially have adverse impact on their military operations. There's a concern about alternative energy development, mostly in northeastern North Carolina, particularly wind farm development. And they also have a concern about the impacts that this might have on their radar system and also electromagnetic frequency impacts. And Captain Johansson can provide some additional information if you have questions regarding the impact of the military operations. But the purpose of the Joint Land Use Study is it provides an opportunity for the military department, in this case, the Navy, to partner with the surrounding communities to undertake a community-driven planning process. The purpose of the program is to help the communities that are affected by the military operations better understand what those operations are, understand what the issues and concerns of the military might be with civilian development outside the gate, and then help you factor in some of these concerns and issues into your ongoing planning procedures, and also the processes that you use to approve development projects. When I first met with the Navy in the fall of 2014, or it may have even been summer of 2014, the first question I asked them is, "What are your issues and concerns?" And then the next question I asked is, you know, "Describe to me what your military operations are, and what's the footprint for those operations?" Because that will help me better understand what communities or jurisdictions I need to bring to the table to partner with you to undertake this planning process. And they identified the city of Chesapeake, Virginia, and then five northeastern North Carolina counties, Currituck, Camden, Proquemmons, Pasquetank, and Gates. And so I consider these jurisdictions as the counties or jurisdictions that we need to pull together to undertake the Joint Land Use Study. Gates County probably falls on the far western end of this military footprint that the Navy's concerned about, but I was invited by your county administrator to provide your briefing, and after the briefing, I'm happy to answer any questions and hopefully gain your support to participate in the Joint Land Use Study. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Well, the first thing that comes to my mind is that the last time the Navy did study in this area before, the old, after the outlanding, outlying landing field, and that have a relative effect in the county because of the possibility of noise and so forth. But what I'm hearing this Joint Land Use Study is to, basically, to try to find out what potential development the county has in the future plans, and to see if it possibly conflicts with what would be in the best interest of the Navy. I think the gist of what you're saying, that's what I kind of got out of it. I noticed that you said that wind, wind, wind solar, wind solar development, wind farms have some concerns with the Navy. So in saying that, when we're trying to have economic development and we do decide to bring some of these things in, and the Navy says, "Well, you know, that really is gonna have a negative effect," you know, what kind of considerations are the Navy willing to give to the counties to help us in our economic development, you know, when there are conflicts of interest? You know, we want to provide for our people, we want to move forward, but you know, if some of the things we identify is gonna be a positive for us, what is the Navy gonna do to try to help remediate or help us out and make concessions down the road?
Okay. I guess my comments to those questions, first of all, I want to clarify upfront, because this has come up with all my meetings with the jurisdictions, that this Joint Land Use Study has nothing to do with the outlying field. This is a community-driven study by the community. It's not a Department of Defense study, it's not a Department of Navy study, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. And the purpose of this study effort is really to gather everybody together in one planning process, allow the Navy to help you better understand what their issues are in terms of their concerns about potential impacts to their military operations, and then a consultant team that our office will help support you to undertake the Joint Land Use Study through our grant program. The consultant team will work with the communities, help you better understand what these issues are, what steps you might need to take as a community to factor in these issues and concerns into your planning procedures, your plans, your development review procedures. Also, the benefit of participating in the Joint Land Use Study is it allows the communities to better understand or identify those areas that the military has most concern about citing of alternative energy projects, in this case, it's mostly wind in North Carolina. So when you begin conversations with an energy developer, that you are in a position of better understanding what areas might cause problems for the military, and then ideally refer them early in their development process to the military so they have an opportunity to comment and work directly with the wind energy developers. Right now, the way the process is working across the country, the Department of Defense often doesn't learn of these wind energy projects or alternative energy projects until it's much further down the project development stream. And what they want to do is to be able to work with local government, state government, and start that dialogue much earlier. And so one of the purposes of this Joint Land Use Study would be to identify what step you as local jurisdictions could take to facilitate that early dialogue and communication with the military. In terms of helping you continue to grow and thrive economically, the Joint Land Use Study is not intended to stop any development, it's to help you make, I guess, better informed decisions on how best to guide that development over time, and also to allow the military to continue to exist and conduct their operations. One of the reasons why I've asked the Assistant Secretary of Commerce's office to be represented today is that we have them involved in the Seymour Johnson Joint Land Use Study. That's a nomination that we received from the Air Force in 2013, and that study should soon be underway. That particular study is being sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Rural Development Division, because of the large geographic area that needed to be covered, and it also provides them an opportunity to work with the affected jurisdictions. So as they undertake the Joint Land Use Study for Seymour Johnson, they can better understand what the impact or the military operations are, the impact various civilian actions have upon those operations, and then with the Department of Commerce there, we can also hopefully marry up some economic development strategies. So it would be an effort that would help guide development, but also work with you as communities, rural communities, to help foster your continued economic development.
Are there MOUs that are attached to the guidelines that already exist in any of the other counties? Memorandums of understanding?
Between the military? I don't think so, are there?
No, sir, we currently don't have any memorandums of understanding with any counties. We really don't have strong relationships with any in the current counties, which is why they nominated us for a Joint Land Use Study. I really do want to enter into a strong relationship with the five counties, as I have with the city of Chesapeake. I do have an MOU with one insisting wind farm developer now, and I do have a very strong relationship with the developers, albeit later in the game. There's been recent efforts in the state of North Carolina to ensure that we are called upon to make sure that our interests are at least understood before a state decision's made for permitting and whatnot. But right now, it's not strong enough, and I think that if we coordinate with you and establish a relationship, our encroachment action plan and your comprehensive plan of your economic development plan, you can put them right next to each other and say, "Oh, look, they chat," other than, you know, my encroachment action plan saying, "If you can't do this," and you're saying, "We're gonna do that." And although I'm deferring, William's gonna be here for a little while and works with me, we, we, our, our goal is always a win-win, and we have not said no yet. We've said, "A little bit here, a little bit there," but it's all, it's all worked out with our one developer, and we're in conversations with another one. So I don't want you all to get the feeling I'm here to say we can't do something in your county, it's your county, and this, this J-loss, if we do it with all the counties, will educate us as well on what you want to do, and we can take that back and go, and we might, we might want to consider the counties before we do this on our base, which, which impacts you all. So we're here to learn from you just as much as we want you to learn from us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let me speak for myself. I'm concerned just because you're here, just because you're here.
Yes, sir.
Puts up my radar. This board, the General Statues of North Carolina, our ordinances, our bill inspector, our permitting process will determine what we build. So I'm troubled by the thought that somebody outside Gates County needs to come and instruct us where to build and what to do. We're not gonna build a building so high that a plane will run into it.
Right.
We're not gonna predate so much issues with radar that I'm aware of. I know that we're not a good candidate for wind farm, looked into that. Even Hartford had proposed wind farm, and nothing's happened. So I'm just concerned that you folks would take it upon yourself to come and help us when we don't need help. And I'm afraid that we go through this study... that a document would be created that you would use against us. That later, when you want to fly over us, and when you want to build a landing field here, you'll have this document that says, "This is not a good idea for you to use this problem in this manner", because I believe, and I'm, I'm saying all this in respectful manner, I just receive it that way, 'cause I'm a very pro-military person. But I recall, Commissioner Jordan said, "How can it fit when OLF, when we first heard those three letters?" And that feeling is still there. And when, I know that when it's time to be ramped back up, that feeling and the signs and the attitudes and the articles and the people coming to that podium will increase again, and it should, if they're opposed to it. And we'll support them, uh, I believe, I know I will, in, uh, doing everything we can to keep our community quiet and to let it grow the way we want to grow it. So, uh, I, I thank you for coming here, if there's, you said, "Win-win", and, uh, that's one of the things when we made that statement promptly to, to speak up in this matter, because we're winning already, and we know, we know exactly how we want to do it. And, uh, I do appreciate you coming here again. Uh, I will say this from everybody here and everybody in the audience, I'll speak for them to say that we love our military. We started meeting in prayer, we salute that flag, and, uh, and we appreciate what you guys do. We appreciate your support, and it is an honor, so.
Mr. Stone, you gotta comment?
Um...
Go ahead. Mr. Jordan?
Commissioner Jordan? If we were to be, uh, entering to the study, when would we meet? Where would we meet? How many would we meet? Just what, what does this consist of? Uh, you know, give me an idea of what it's all about.
Okay. Um, we're in the early phases of trying to get the joint land use study project underway. Uh, once our office receives a nomination, the first thing we do is meet with the installation to gain an understanding of what their issues and concerns are, also gain an understanding of what their military footprint is. Then that allows me to reach out to the affected jurisdictions. Um, I'm in that phase now. I'm reaching out to the five North Carolina counties and the city of Chesapeake. The city of Chesapeake's already indicated that they're interested in supporting a, a study effort. Um, however, when I met with the Navy, my understanding was most of their concerns are looking south because of the radar system that they have. So, the North Carolina counties, um, would decide among themselves who they would like to have sponsor the study effort, kind of take a lead. We would identify a study sponsor, and then we would also identify a recipient of the federal grant monies that would be made available to, uh, support the study effort. Most of our communities choose to bring in an outside consultant, um, to help them with the study effort. I would work with you, uh, to develop the scope of work for that consulting activity, help you put together a, a grant application to receive the federal funds, and then we would get the study underway. In terms of meetings, what we generally do is, uh, among the affected jurisdictions, we'll pull together what we refer to as a joint land use study policy committee, kind of like an executive steering committee, that would have representation from all the jurisdictions. We might also set up what we refer to as like a, a technical working group. This would be mostly, um, your staff, subject matter experts, um, that would meet probably on a more regular basis with the consultant team to help guide the study through completion. Um, the policy committee, I don't, we'd probably have a kickoff meeting once the consultant was brought onboard, and then you would probably meet maybe every three months or so. Generally, these joint land use studies, once the, the consultant team is onboard and the study's underway, they generally take anywhere from twelve to fifteen months. Some might take a little bit longer because of the complexity of the issues and the geographic territory that has to be covered. Uh, this particular joint land use study, I can't imagine that it would take more than twelve months. Um, the technical staff might meet on a more regular basis, um, possibly once a month. Generally, how it works is the consultant has a kickoff meeting, then they'll meet with the individual jurisdictions, the military department kind of gather the information to do their assessment, and then they'll come up with a, a preliminary set of recommendations or a, a preliminary draft document. Then that's presented to the public, um, comments received, and then you'll move forward, a final draft will be completed, presented to the policy committee, and then a final report will be accepted. Then, that final report, though, is just accepted by the policy committee. Then, each individual jurisdiction that participated in the study, it's up to those, um, legislative bodies, the city council or the, you know, county board of commissioners, to decide what to do with the recommendations. Um, and again, I want to emphasize, this is a community study. It's not the military, it's the community. So the recommendations that are in that document are your recommendations.
Any additional questions?
I'm gonna really finish in just a second.
Okay.
Try to get, try to all I can about this before we make it to C. You mentioned a grant, which they apply for. What is the normal amount of this grant?
Um, on average, our joint land use study, well, first of all, we have probably over seventy-five joint land use study projects underway across the country now. We have about a hundred and eight that have been completed, um, since nineteen eighty-five. That's how long the program's been in place. Um, the, uh, the, so the average cost is around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, based on projects we currently have. Of that, the federal government through the grant program will sponsor ninety percent of the cost of the project, and then there is a ten percent non-federal match. Most of our communities, um, leave that non-federal match by the staff time that they, you know, makes their staff available to contribute and support to the study effort. Some communities choose just to provide a, a cash match, but we don't see that often because of the financial status of many of the local governments across the country. But generally, that's how the non-federal match is met, through, um, uh, staff contribution.
All right. Last two questions.
Mm-hmm.
What do you need from us as a board? And also, in order to give you a decision? Also, in your own words, what is gonna be the benefit to Gates County if you enter into this, this, uh, cooperative study? Just, you have also, what is the benefit? I know what the benefit is to the Navy, but what is the benefit to Gates County?
Um, I would say the benefit to Gates County or any jurisdiction that decides to participate in the joint land use study, it, it helps you make, um, more informed decisions as you decide how to, uh, guide community development, you know, continue your economic development for the community, and a better understanding of what exactly are the military operations, and what are their issues and concerns. The whole purpose of the joint land use study is to try to take actions, both on the military side and the community side, so both parties can continue to coexist. And in terms of what we would need, um, we would, ideally, um, if we could have a resolution passed, um, that would indicate your county's support and willingness to participate in a joint land use study for NSA, Hampton Roads, Northwest Annex.
And do you need that, um, in the February part?
What I would like is just a verbal indication initially, you know, "Do you want to participate"? Um, because I will be honest, um, we, the city of Chesapeake has already indicated their interest. We're waiting on Currituck County. Hopefully, I'll have a decision from them maybe in the next couple of weeks. Um, I'm still waiting on the other North Carolina counties. Camden County, um, their county board already took action. They are not interested in participating. Um, they have concerns about how the joint land use study might affect their ability to develop and their economic development opportunities. I did not have an opportunity to make a formal presentation before their board, uh, before they took that action.
Okay. Um, is any other questions? Thank you for coming.
Mm-hmm.
We'll take it under consideration when we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to administrative report. Oh, the audit. I thought I could get the audit. This pit will kill.
I'll just try to speak real loud, uh, so I can do the presentation. First off, I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to serve your audience for the current year. Um, some of the audit highlights is that you had an unmodified opinion, which represents that we did not find anything that was, uh, a material mistake to your financials, and it would be okay for any of the readers if your findings was, they wouldn't be misled. And we just wanted to thank Sandy and her staff for being so cooperative. And I wanted to also mention why I'm here anyway after your, your end, presenting your audit. Throughout the state, the state of, of the Department of Health and Human Services provides confirmation for your scheduled thermostat words for the numbers, and they were late on getting those, we didn't see those until about November, November, I believe. And your report was dated December third, which was a lot earlier than many of the counties, and your report was approved by the LGC prior to, um, the final deadline, first Friday, LGC. A general fund summary is that in the current year, your revenues and expenditures, or your revenues were over, exceeded your expenditures by one point eight million, but you also had transferred out from the general fund of about one point eight million, and transfers in about a hundred fifty thousand, so you just about broke even. Your fund balance serves as a measure of your county's financial resources. Your assets less your liabilities peak your fund balance. Fund balance has five different classifications. Non-spendable, which is, uh, inventory prepaid, which Gates County does not have. Uh, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Your committed is typically of like a project ordinance, and assigned is typically an appropriation of fund balance in the next year's budget. This year, your fund balance increased a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Your available fund balance is how the LGC calculates, uh, and compares you to other governmental units. So it takes your fund balance, less your, um, non-spendable, which as I mentioned before, you all have any, less your stabilization by state statute, and that gives you your available fund balance. And the LGC will calculate, uh, your available fund balance as a percentage of transfers out and expenditures. And that's how they give the best comparison between governmental units. Uh, your total fund balance is about four point, or three point four, almost three point five million. Your stabilization by state statute is about a million, which gives you two point four million in available fund balance, which is a decrease of about a hundred eighty-eight thousand over prior year, which is due to your AR, your account's liquidated, not being available yet, and the money's haven't been received. The calculation I talked about a moment ago, your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out increased about five percent over the prior year. And the LGC recommends that you have at least eight percent available fund balance, which is about one month's, uh, expenditures, and you have over three months. Your top three revenues were adware taxes, sales taxes, and restricted intergovernmental, which is about ten point five million, or ninety-six percent of those three, and the rest of them were, um, other taxes and licenses, unrestricted intergovernmental, permits and fees, sales and services, investment income, and other miscellaneous income. Your property taxes increased about two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, or four percent over the prior year, and that's due to your collection rate and increase, and a little bit due to the tax impact together. Your restricted intergovernmental decreased about eighty-three thousand, and that is, uh, your federal state grants. Your sales tax increased a hundred-eight thousand, or six percent over the prior year. Your top three expenditures for the general fund were general government, human services, and education. The other twenty-nine percent is made of public safety, economic development, cultural recreation, and debt service. And the top three comprised of seventy-one percent, or about six point four million. Your education expenses in the current year decreased by about seven-seven thousand, or three percent. Your human services increased by about sixty-eight thousand, or three percent. Your general government expenditures increased by about a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, or twelve percent. The last two slots that I have are about your enterprise fund. The water fund, your cash increased about seventy-eight thousand over the prior year. Your unrestricted net position increased about a hundred-and-forty-nine thousand. Charges for services increased as well by about a hundred-and-forty-five thousand, and your debt services, just about the same. And your landfill, your cash decreased by a hundred-and-ninety thousand, the caches, as of June thirtieth on the specific date. Uh, the unrestricted net position decreased about fifty-two thousand. Charges for services increased by about eighty, and your operating expenditures increased by a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. Any questions?
I have one. I think you were talking about our unrestricted, or our fund balance of, that in the state requires eight percent, but for counties who are in the tight size, takes county, where would we be?
Uh, I don't have the information, actually, but I'll be glad to look it up and get back to you, um, and I'll just, you know, think. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. If y'all have any other questions, and, or if you think of anything later, just let Sandy know, and, uh, she can either contact myself or the in-charge of management job.
Any additional questions? Well, thank you for coming. And it's always nice to hear the callers that wear too much oil. Okay, to administrative report, um, we have here's my county manager.
This report is produced from eighteen, two thousand and fourteen through January twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, and I do have some updates to a few of the items that are in the management's report that I will provide following the report. We are very glad to announce that Crystal Crawford began work on January twelfth as our table board manager. With the historic courthouse, Andreas and company are continuing work on the west wing. This work is being funded by the Gates County Historical Society. The steel support beams have been installed on the north and south walls of the west wings. Due to break deterioration, Clearscapes and Andreas and company have consulted with the historic mason on how to best proceed with the west wall. Once designs are developed, they will be presented. As an update, I did forward the commissioners an email from John Zellweger with Clearscapes regarding the status of the wall, and they have not decided upon a design that they will share with us at this time. Update on the EIC building, both are being reviewed, and it is anticipated that work can begin this spring on the drainage issue as well as remediation of the crawl states. This has been a difficult time, and I appreciate all of the effort that Crystal has put into trying to receive all of the quotes. We're looking for people with specific qualifications to do the work on this building so that it is fixed in proper manner. Meetings on January sixth, many economic developers and county managers in the... Meetings on January 6th, many economic developers and county managers in the northeast met with John Chapey, who is president, CEO of NC East and his staff to learn about the NC East and how it can benefit counties in northeastern North Carolina. NC East and the Northeast Alliance merged on January 1st, 2015. As part of the merger, the Northeast Alliance paid dues to, for all of the counties covered by them to become affiliate members of the NC East for the next four and a half years. This means the NC East will market the counties when recruiting businesses to the eastern half of North Carolina. On January the 9th, the Northeast Economic Developers, ACRN, need, meant to discuss how to proceed since the merger of the Northeast Alliance and NC East. The developers voted on a new name and acronym, the Northeast being one word, Economic Developers, which stands, which will be NED. Most developers agreed to continue participating in meetings at the NC East and NED for the present time. On January the 12th, I met with Sunbury Ruiners members to discuss the Sunbury Streetlights. Sunbury citizens have voluntarily been funding the streetlights and contributions in recent years have declined. The Ruiners would like the county commissioners to take over this responsibility and I've told them I would bring this to the commissioners' attention for discussion and I will follow up with some more details in a moment about that. I attended the municipal and county administrative course in Chapter P on January 13th through the 16th. On January the 20th, Chairman Hoffler and I met with Dr. Candy Dean Meyer, College of the Alabama Marlins President, Marion Harris Jr., who is trustee chair, and Paul O'Neill, vice chair, to discuss how COA can better serve the Gates County citizens. There was a joint planning for, for an adjustment in commissioners' meetings facilitated by the planner Jennifer Baptiste that day as well. The consensus was for Gates County to move forward with developing, developing a comprehensive land use plan as well as updating GIS. On January 22nd, the Tri-County Animal Shelter Committee met for updates. While euthanasia rates are still high, many animals are being sent to animal rescues in surrounding areas and are being adopted. Plans were reviewed and discussed for needed improvements. The committee recommended that Dana Cane, who is the shelter director, and Barbara Gates, aware president, work together to develop the scope of work for a building and present it to Kevin Howard, Tuan County manager, for him to release an RFP. Now, I'd like to provide you an update on the Sunbury, um, streetlights. When the information was presented to me, I was informed that this has been in place for about 15 years and that the Gates County Board of Commissioners name is on the bill. Due to the decline in payments, they are behind, um, quite a bit on paying the bill. They have never received a notice that the streetlights will be turned off and they do not know why they never received a notice. I was also provided a diagram to show where all of the streetlights are within, um, Sunbury. We have done some investigation and I thank Sandy for the time that she's been on hold trying to find this out. Uh, there is not a tax identification number listed with this account, so therefore it is not listed as an account in Gates County. Dominion also was not sure why they had, Sunbury Ruiners Club had never been sent a disconnect notice. I said I would bring this before the commissioners to make you aware of this. It is not the responsibility of the county to provide streetlights for any of the citizens or any of this, anywhere within the county and we cannot charge for streetlights and collect the money and then pay the bill. So I would like to leave you with this information, whether it's for discussion now, for consideration at a later meeting, but I did tell the Ruiners I would bring it before the commissioners.
Who is the commissioner's name on that?
There is no name. There's not a name listed, the, it was addressed to the Gate, County of Gates Board of Commissioners.
Oh, I'll let you do that. Come on.
If, on average, the bill is $432.90, however, over, almost $3,000 is owed on this bill.
Unfortunately, um, I, I certainly, you know, being commissioner of the, um, Sunbury, the area of Sunbury, I'd like to see as much help as possible. We did go over this a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, if you did, Sandy may remember, we did quite a bit of research as far as what we could do with that general statute. I believe in that time, we, we could implement a tax, but we'd have to get so many signatures signed up for, I don't remember all the details, but it was, it was quite a, a process. And apparently, um, uh, we did not get that implemented and one of the concerns by the city board at that time was that if we did do it for Sunbury, Hobbsville and Gates and, or a few, many other towns, we'd, uh, we'd want to be treated the same. I do think we, we need to address this. I think we need to do the research and find out what, why we do not do it before, we've already been through this process before and, and based on what the decision was, based on the information we had at that time, and, and that would be the response that, that we would give at this time.
So there are 28 lights.
Do you know when or why they were putting the kind of light?
No.
I do believe that the citizens of Sunbury, there was a meeting, um, with them that they, and they, a lot of them said they were not going to pay, correct?
No, there's not been a meeting, no. What?
Like, there was a meeting a few years ago.
Okay, I'm not sure about that, but recently they said because of the number of people who have come in, they rent houses, they're not, they're not making contributions. A lot of the citizens who have made contributions in the past are now on fixed incomes and may or may not make contributions. They said the ones they can depend on the most are, of course, the businesses that are located in Sunbury.
I have another question.
Pardon?
Chairman, uh, in addition to Commissioner Jordan's statements as pertaining to the Ruiners Club, I know as, as a member of Ruiners Club in Gates, we too have discussed that and brought up the issue about lights and we did the research, uh, actually the two of us did, back in our own records and discovered that the Ruiners Club, Gates did at one time did sponsor licensing for them themselves through their fundraisers and other community, uh, actions, so.
And I do know that, like, I was a member of Hobbsville Ruiners Club and they did it in Hobbsville, but then when they got too big, they ended up having to span it. When they got too big to a point, they told, told the citizens, you keep the lights, but you've got to pay for them. I mean, it's on your property, whatever. So I think it's a, a, a lot of Ruiners Club took that on and a lot of them have gotten out of it.
They did. They probably followed lead, somebody did first and then the others to sink the reason. I'm curious, uh, Commissioner Freeman, are those lights still on?
They're not.
They're not?
Uh, some are on and citizens have picked it up themselves, residents in front of them, some not. And we've talked with Dominion Power as pertaining to that and they did offer to put up more streetlights if the citizens themselves would pay for it. So they offered free device and, and equipment, if you will, to places that citizens should have to pay for.
And according to this diagram, it appears that some are close to some of the businesses or in the business parking lot and others are residential areas.
I think it's a safety issue. I mean, if you cut the lights off in Sunbury, it's fairly concentrated and quite a few, residents in that area. This is, you know, it's gonna, it could possibly create more work for Sheriff Park if you're cut off, but from what I recall, there's a process we can do it. It has to be where the citizens sign up per general statute, um, that they will be willing to be taxed and taxed part and, and collect that. We could do it that way as a board, that was one of the only ways we could do it. Like I said, it's detailed in the minutes that we previously, when we previously discussed it and, um, you know, I, I thought it was a, you know, settlement, but apparently it's come back again. And, uh, you know, if that process can be implemented, you know, where if you have a certain number of citizens in the county in that area that are willing to sign up, then the county could take over and we would, we would collect that tax for those lights and we would be responsible and the board would be in for it, but it has to go through that process. So, you know, that guy, I think you ought to take a look at and see what we did come up with in the past since it's come back, rather than just, you know, dismissing it. And, counter, I, I would, I would like to see, find those methods and give us a summary on what, uh, on what transpired.
Do you remember what year?
I would say it was, it's been three years. I think it's been three years.
It hasn't been since, I've been.
It is early, but.
So, like, 2010?
I would, I would sort of.
Eleven, I believe, I think. I would say eleven, back to, 2011, nine, probably about two years to be accurate, three years, three years.
Okay, so we will just table until the research is done?
I would make sure, but it's basically impromptu, but I would say that's.
Just do the research?
Do the research and put that with the general, that's, uh, we, give us a quick the process that we went through for it in the last, uh, last night of K-1.
Okay. All right, with, in concert to the courthouse, I have mentioned the email that I sent from John Zillwicker. There's also distributed on each of your spots, a letter that has been drafted. Ms. Hoffman has presented me with the body. I, I have a few things outlining what has been accomplished so far in the courthouse. This would be a letter that could be sent to citizens or businesses and also perhaps used with any grants that might be available to help with restoration of the courthouse. It's my recommendation that it be signed by Chairman Hoffman, since she is also associated with the Gates County Historical Society, Jack Owens as vice chair, and Ms. Eve Sealy, Solomon, I'm sorry, and I did put her, spelled her name incorrectly and I did not put her title on this letter because I don't know what her time she is. But that is, that is just my recommendation and that is there for you to review and make comments.
I would make one comment. This letter was generated through the Old Court House Committee, Commissioner Jordan and I, um, that Susan Schulz, the, let me give that, we give the Savage Home, uh, which had been very well fundraising up in New Jersey and she helped draft basically the letter and we added some historical dates to it, but, um.
I don't have that. I read it early. Has anybody talked about the distribution of the letter to just the county or?
No, that's not been discussed. We thought if we could get a general letter developed and then we could decide how it needs to be distributed. I believe the Historical Society might have some names. I know there's been a few commissioners who have mentioned a few people as well.
And Commissioner Owens, uh, I've discussed a couple of, of issues surrounding that with, uh, a cabinet manager, Ms. Ranger, and, uh, and that develops back from the Fed, you were, who happens to be accustomed to all of the problems, so, combined and, uh, some of his relatives that are, that are interested in the Old Court House, they would give the secretary a piece of furniture to, to the old house, it's about 200 years old.
I have the conflict that being chair and president of this County Historical Society, so I think I'd, I'd like Jack do this part of the meeting.
Okay, all right. Um, you've all seen the letter, I guess, that we talked about in front of you and certainly a lot of you well aware and content already. The fact that we've had, uh, some help from the league, from New Jersey, the league, um, she has some experience with it, I think it's a good letter. Does anybody have any refinement or anything they, they think, I know it was a short period of time you were looking at it, but any refinement to that?
Commissioner Owens, what I was, uh, one thing that I'd like to see from these commissioners was cabinet manager, uh, might see is that we additionally, uh, about 10-year rule in that, uh, make, make a, a very extended, uh, with the caption of that, so that would be.
A little more emphasis on that.
Yes, sir.
Cause if I, and, and to add to your comment, you know, I, the reason I asked about distribution of the letter outside county, and there's some people that fall very highly of that in Raleigh, might be one of the most deprecated, so I can concur with your comments there. So you might see maybe a little more emphasis.
Well, and they can describe it, it came from Gates County, he served as Secretary of State for 50 years, uh, re-labeled, uh, so it might catch your eye, I don't know.
Any other comments? Yeah, I, I, you know, looking over, I think that, uh, you know, many of the, we'd like to see this part of the report, I think you need to state that the last sentence where we have, where we say we're asking you, uh, there may in some sense it's to, uh, not support the project, probably, but we're asking, uh, all who would like to see this project move forward to contribute any amount, small or large, to further, um, restore the Old Courthouse. I would like to see that, um, you know, rather than, you know, taking the assumption that 100% is fully providing the project. Also, Sandy, in your ears, you can address this, I would like to see added in there that any amount that's donated is or is not taxed at all.
Okay, so when we researched this before, when the topic first came up, donations are taxed at all.
And it would be taxed at all, I'd like to see that added in there. I think that would help as well. Any other comments?
You know, Jack, uh, this is, it may not be Dear Gates County residents, do we want to expand that to, of people?
Really, it can be checked. Like I said, this was just a draft, so if it's going to be, and I'll use that as a general title, I would feel more comfortable, personally, if that was going to write the letter to you, I would put your name instead of using Dear Gates County residents, I'd like, like Dear Mr. Billy Belt, Dear Miss Sandy Pittman.
Or, or Dear County, uh, Gates County residents and supporters. Or, uh, we could end up with maybe this as a beginning template and four different scaled letters for depending on who the, you know, the man of it is. But it's a great start and, and I like the concept of getting started on that, cause you know, we involve the people who love Gates County and involve the people who care about the courthouse, we're gonna, you know, we just want to get a lot of good supporters. So those are comments that I hear, are there any other comments? What would be the favor of the board this morning on the matter? Mr. Vice Chairman, I would, uh, make a motion that, um, that we move forward to develop the letter, uh, taking into consideration the comments for modification, um, and, uh, bring it back to the board with the modification. I would say a motion to motion. We have a, a motion and a second, the board, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Matter of curious.
And I have one other letter that has, um, that presented, it is a follow-up to the conversation last month concerning the school zones and speeding. I have presented a letter. It will be sent to three different people within DOT if the board so chooses. The letter you have actually has a space for the chair to sign, however, it can be changed so all commissioners may. so all commissioners may sign this letter.
If you recall, Deputy Camden came to present to us the problems with, in some of the schools, or near all the schools, with the traffic and the accidents that have occurred, and this has asked DOT to, um, make some changes in this. Why does it pleasure the board?
I think, I'm glad we send the letter, um, as part of each, each commissioner's assignment, I think that would be a good idea also.
I'd sort of second that motion.
Motion has been made, uh, and seconded to send the letter, but to include, um, all commissioners' names of the letter. Any discussion?
I, I, I had one thought, I'm not opposed to, to all the signatures and all of that, but we do have letterheads with all the commissioners' names on it, I notice this one we do not, uh, because that would be, uh, an alternative, I, I think it's, uh, when we send those out like this, that it's good to have all their names on it, on the, uh, letterhead, uh, especially when we, you know, make the comments, we all support it, seeing even who we are, but even with signing, I think our names should be, uh, included in the letterhead. That's just a comment, that's...
I don't think we need to amend the motion, you know, just make sure it's on the, the letterhead. But, okay, the motion before us is that we will, uh, to approve this letter, but include all the names of commissioners, so each, each of us could sign and display, uh, all those, and they would say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that...
And that completes my report.
Thank you. Finance and tax. Don't everybody jump up at once? We have our reports, do you have any questions on the finance? Now, you did make us quite a lot to read, just, like, you did.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yes.
I did have one, um, uh, and I probably, Santa could have gotten this due individually, but there appears to be an error. I think it's an error, may not be, but on the expenditure statement, page 46, around, uh, a numerical statement, statements in the, in the binder, um, 46 and then page 10, but under the A to line, apparently this is under the SS.
Yes. There was an error in entries, and I'm not sure if it was corrected before, I don't have that in front of me. When the expenditure was originally posted to the longer account, and we have corrected it, and it probably hit two different periods, we spend about $1,000 a year, that's a contract, and I believe that it was posted to an incorrect account, and we corrected it following up. Again, I don't have what you're looking at in front of me, but I'm, I'm quite sure that that's what it is.
Yeah, so $977 activity this period, expended a year-to-date, 977, uh, encumbered to year-to-date, 977, you know, but we came up with 195%.
Right, and I believe the issue there was that the purchase order that was put in place early on to encumber those funds was not cleared out when it was entered. The 977 is an annual figure, and it was entered at the beginning of the year as a purchase order to encumber the funds. When it was paid, that purchase order was not liquidated, so it's showing that we've paid it and we still have it out there. Those percentages include expenditures year-to-date and any funds encumbered, which is why that figure is so high. So when we, if we, I think we have already cleared that encumbrance, so it should be cleaned up the next time.
It caught my eye.
Yes, I have a check box, I have two, but I've all got, it stands to 100%. No, that, that's just an error, I mean, true.
Thank you. This is Lightwood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And, uh, also, we were sent the collective report, uh, first of all, any questions or comments on that report as we move through? You'll see we are, as we approach, um, you know, into February, whose collection rates, as we like to see, are peaking, whether they should be, uh, we want to continue to have that movement, maybe a positive direction. Um, any comments on the report?
I would like to hear, are they bringing them in or...
Uh, I, I believe so, that was in, of course, and we'll get to a little bit later regarding the taxing and foreclosure process, uh, in the last three weeks, we have had some resolve with some of those accounts at Zakiya's, uh, those accounts are paid in full, they don't reflect on the most recent report that you were sent, uh, that we didn't update them, but they are in fact, you know, paid in full. Um, three of those are no longer in foreclosure, they've resolved all the debt, whether it be from 2006 and as well as the current taxes, so we see those demand letters from Zakiya's as opposed to what may be sent from the tax office, has a little more stigma attached when it comes from a law firm, so, um, our conversations with Ellis and emails has tapered off quite a bit. Um, we were dealing with Ken Stilly, so we, we may have to, you know, make a visit to Edington to have some, uh, face-to-face contact with Ellis Law there. We've not, we had some response with, with Ken, and that's tapered off, we, we proposed or asked a question, and we've not been as, um, it, it may be excited about their due diligence in response to us, so, um, that's not far from the spectrum if we make a trip to Edington just to, you know, be kind of, see the status of those six accounts remaining at Ellis now, so not much activity with those Ellis accounts. I will say those are the ones with estate property, they encompass a bit more title research, if you will, um, those people that are in Texas or Virginia or wherever, they are difficult to find, and, and so, uh, you know, there's no, there's no defense on Ellis for being perhaps a little more conservative, but they, they are some of the more difficult titles, yeah, at Ellis's those accounts.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we, I did notice that Ellis had no, no funds this time.
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Okay, moving to the, um, next portion of your report.
Um, and just touching on the, I just want to make a note on the prepayments, we have started that, that process, uh, collecting prepayments, uh, Deputy Tax Collector Laura Chavis, uh, what we typically do is develop a spreadsheet, and we are receiving those funds, and of course, they'll be posted toward, toward the 15 bills, and that'll continue, you know, uh, July, August, when those bills are sent, so, um, you do have some refunds this month, actually, refunds slash overpayments, these again are from some of your mortgage companies, uh, state employees, uh, or attorney fees that when closing was done, the attorney submitted the payments as well as, uh, the taxpayer, so they're actually, all of these refunds that you were presenting, that are actually overpayments, if you will, um, they're, um, highlighted there, I don't know if we want to go by one by one or any particular order.
Can we do one by one? Can we do them all from now? Are all payments?
I don't have a problem, I just gotta look at them, uh, but, uh, I guess they were addressed singly, that was...
Yeah, so we have it on the record, so we can...
Just answer the question before we go into that. Sonya, I know we've just come up forward, um, are we checking to see if there are any back taxes on these refunds? We are doing that?
Uh, we do, if it's personal property owing, that is key number one, we, we like to keep that money in-house before issuing any refund, whatever it would be, a personal property account or any unresolved taxes related to real estate, um, I, I think that's long been the concept, in most tax offices, we like to keep that money and allocate it, you know, before sending it back. In this case, the check was made, uh, a review, if you will, uh, there were no delinquent accounts, and so, yeah, we, we sure do, yeah.
Great, great.
Okay.
Um, yes, we can go by, we have got Mr. George Edward Nowell, um, we Godwin and Godwin submitted the payment, this was one, um, first part of January, actually.
We might want to wait, we might... We might need to back up, because that's not the ones that we have.
I'm...
The amount, $317.
I think, oh, the one that was sent.
In a previous packet there.
Okay, when we're discussing these matters, we want to refer to these by the dollar amount, and also, you know, looking at the top, I see that form number, I was looking for some way to identify what we're talking about by a number, and all the $4 amount, there's a bill number there, is that, is that bill number constant for this?
Okay, yeah, that would be appropriate, yeah, I agree, yeah, okay, in this case, it's, um, bill number 14, A as in Adam, 0100581, and the amount of 317.27.
The last three digits in the dollar, man.
Okay.
No, I, I kind of know, it's a little short.
Okay, all right, account number, yes, okay, um, in this case, 7401, account number, um, in the amount of $317.27, um, and there again, the attorney paid the fees, um, as well as the taxpayer when the property was transferred.
I'll make a motion to approve the refund, uh, taxpayer account from 741.
And I hear a second?
Second.
Second is the date, all, it's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, um, the next one is account number 24849, in the amount of $1,298.76.
Madam Chair, I approve that, and motion, second.
Uh, motion has been made, second, to approve a refund to account number 24849, all those in favor, say aye?
Okay, the next is 27634, account number, uh, the amount of $495.80.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion has been made, and seconded, all those in favor, say aye?
Okay, the next one, uh, account number 20062, uh, in the amount of $349.74.
200, how much?
62.
Yeah, it was, um, in the amount of 349.74, uh, account number 20062.
I'll move to approve that.
Motion has been made, second.
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor of approving the account number 20062, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, approved.
Uh, the next account number 27080, in the amount of $250.36.
I'll make a motion to approve, 27, do you want to go?
Uh, motion has been made, and seconded, we approve a refund to account number 27080, all those, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, approved.
Okay, that completes all the refunds there?
I have one more.
Oh, we have one.
Oh, really? Okay.
Two more, 202.
Sure, yeah.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay, that might be my first, okay, all right, thank you. Um, yes, in the amount of, uh, 437.6, yes, thank you.
Make motion to approve, uh, 2102, second.
Motion has been made, and seconded, to approve the refund to account number 21302, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
May I ask, did we approve 20062?
I think sometimes, I think I might shuffle them, got my, uh, changing, um, we've got those out of the way, Mrs. Lane, but isn't it about time for a, you know, like, a link up letters?
Uh, yes, um, they went out January 26th, the second round, if you will, uh, the mass mailing, it was about seven, uh, 1,760, the link-up letters that went out, and we, we got some, some hits, some good response on those, um, as we approached, you know, you know, the phone calls, another round of links, as we get to the point where we start advertising, that'll be our, our next, I will ask the board, uh, I know in recent years, there was some attempt to reflect all years delinquent, uh, if that process, you know, if we want to continue that process, I'll just pose that to the board, instead of just listing the current year, I know a year passed, all delinquent years have been listed, uh, in the paper, probably some of that, you know, as we approach the march, uh, mailing, if you will.
I think it's always a good idea to list all the delinquencies.
Yes, I would agree.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
So, I was, um, do we need a motion for the board?
Uh, I believe so, just as a...
Okay. Uh, in the past few years, we have on our delinquent, um, tax report that is publicized in the index, we've had listed not only the current year, but all those years, previous years that have not, that the taxes have not been paid, do we want to continue that process? We will entertain a motion, if that is the pleasure of the board.
I move to continue the process, second.
Yeah, motion has been made, and seconded, that we continue to advertise all years that people have not paid their taxes, any discussion. Here in, um, we'll move on to both, all those in favor of approving the tax administrator to include in the report previous years that have not been paid, um, when they published it in 2015, all those in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And Mrs. Lane?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Well, um, to, from the table, from our last discussion, there was some issue regarding the taxing process, foreclosure process there, and it was sent a, kind of a listing, a barrage of general statutes, uh, there, and, and what that entails is the taxing process, you know, the tax collector, tax administrator has that right, uh, that some general statute, 15356A, noted that we can attach real estate in any form, basically, and as well as personal property, um, however, in saying that, also, it put together kind of a synopsis of those surrounding counties and the methods, you know, they utilize. We currently, we use Zakiya's and of course Ellis', and we hope to have, you know, some spike in continued activity with those accounts being resolved. The foreclosure process is one that should not be taken lightly, a lot of counties have paralegal staff, uh, they have, um, a staff that is a little bit larger in number than what Gates has, with four people, you know, delve into that role, um, it is such that if we were to attach those personal property, I would just say accounts, uh, first of all, there would have to be some assignment, either, you know, from the sheriff's office, and, and sometimes we have that on staff, they, they have sheriff's deputy assigned just for that process, it would have to be some instant of, um, gaining that property, um, and before that, even following all the protocol necessary to, I can't begin to, um, cite those number of cases in, in the state of North Carolina when that process... when that process has been breached or all the steps have not been, you know, finalized. It leaves the county open to much liability in that way. And quite frankly, in my four months tenure here in Gates, you know, assuming any role in house would be observed in doing that, you know. Paralegals are often in place for that reason, they know the law, they know what steps, what protocol have to be followed, you know, for that process. I think utilizing Ellis and Zakiis at this point, we're two steps ahead of the game. And maybe so, we've not seen the sale at the courthouse as of yet from Zakiis. But the activity we have seen, those demanding letters, we've gotten a thousand dollar payments, eighteen hundred dollar payments, you know. We've gotten some response. I just say that to say that this foreclosure tax lien process is not the one to take in light way. Me trying to do, in some counties, absorb that role in house, they have staff to support them, they know legal stipulations involved provided by the general statutes. And those statutes, the ones that I sent you copies of, they're also in place for the taxpayer, the tax under. The process of law would, you know, prohibit from us reaching a step. And the courts also frowned upon that, and a lot of cases get thrown out of court, in Duplin County, Henderson County. Those are earmarked cases to protect the taxpayer. If we were to overlook one person that was associated with any property or any lien of any sort, we compromise the whole case. So, I'm not saying down the road, there would be some absorption, you know, back in house to resolve some of these delinquent accounts. But in four months with my tenure here in Gates, I would, I would not be comfortable in doing that. So I recommend that Zakiis and Ellis proceed, those accounts that we have ready to go to ZLS, to the law firm. That they be submitted, their thirty-six accounts. That those people have been afforded some opportunity with letters, with phone calls, any attempt. And I leave this in your packet as well, those accounts, kind of, and that's been in place probably since last summer. Those accounts have been tabled since our prior tax administrator and prior, that the taxpayer were in place. So, that's kind of a synopsis there, you know, with the foreclosures and the process, as we have it now in Gates.
It was very interesting reading about foreclosures, and if you notice, three counties nearby use the Zakiis law firm. It's working, I think, fairly well.
Well, I know the reason that we asked you to look at this because with some of the outstanding accounts, we asked you to go ahead and attach it. Attach the lien on it. To do that without the proper legal steps would be a little bit risky. Could put us in a little bit of a precarious situation. And I would, I would suggest, I don't think we voted on it, but that we would continue with the legal process that we have in place. Rather than looking at some of those years, citizens that are in many years' careers, rather than just putting the tax lien on that property. Let the legal process play its way out, let the time be.
No, I agree.
And there's accounts for approving entries?
Yes, yes, they do, they do, yeah. And, you know, as you approach some of those older, two thousand and four accounts, so keep in mind, they'll soon obviously fall off the books. But, you know, can't go back more than ten years, so there's some concern about those oh-four, oh-six accounts being delinquent. And you're talking about revenue that is lost in accounting for that, with any further delay, you know. And when we've done every method with attachments, if we can locate people, you know, we also utilize, I think in your synopsis, debt set off is available for those people. We go after any income tax refunds, any lottery winnings, that's also a method. And of course, garnishments with employee, employment, we certainly, anything to keep it out of that foreclosure process that is as long, it's a stigmatizing process. You know, it takes, you know, a while to get that underfoot. So any method we could use in house, you know, send the man letter from the tax office before it goes to the attorney fees. And those thirty-six accounts, that process was utilized in every method. So they were, they were on tap, if you will, for the, you know, ZLS to be turned over to the firm.
Matt, on the tax return, just talking about that one avenue, how did you find your information to know that? Person paid, who's getting your tax refund?
That is a process is the North Carolina debt set off clearinghouse. And we utilize, there's a database, and we work in conjunction with the people in Raleigh. And they update the records based on, based on social numbers that are, you know, put out there. As well as much like we would have with garnishments, with finding out where people were. There's a database set up, and it's been quite productive, a lot of counties utilize that and they are able to. It is a service, but that service often pays for itself, I mean, with the amount of delinquent taxes, you know, that they collect.
Can you only attach the North Carolina refund, or the federal refund as well?
Well, it incorporates any, any refund that they, you know, be getting. We had a call the other day and somebody was in a delinquent situation. And they happen to have a tax rep, you know, calling to us, and they were understanding that that refund would be attached, whatever owing, if you will, whether it was fourteen or previous years. And, you know, we get an opportunity to collect on some of that revenue, so it is a good program, yes, it is.
Any other? And of course, with a property, all taxes have to be satisfied if you want to sell it.
That's right, yes.
Thank you, anything else, Mrs. Slane?
That's pretty much it, any comments or additional questions there?
I'll do research on that.
That is right.
Is that interested, Rita?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Personnel, you have the information before you have any questions. And we do have a position in the debtting tax. Okay, any comments, anybody, the old department reports, the water department?
Yes, Matt Jim, Jim, I'd like to state to the board that I feel that our current customer service policy, where we cut off the water after ten days, I do feel it's a little too restrictive. I feel that, you know, we originally went from two months to one month, five days. We found out that five days was not legal, but ten days, you have to give a ten day notice. We do do a roll call, and I think that's, that's good. But, you know, there's always a possibility of cutting off so much of water. It may have, you know, it's just a human mistake, or fault of a person, or someone could be vulnerable that's in the house. So having said that, you know, even myself, I have had picked up bills from my mailbox and put them in the truck. And next thing I know, well, it bailed out of pocket. I think several years ago, I go there with the tax department, I needed to pay my personal profit tax or something. And I found a bill with a layer in it, in the console. But I would like to see, County Manager get with the water department and take a look at it. We don't want to go back to two months. If we want to keep the ten days in place, there needs to be a method where the citizen gets a notice that they're one bill a month behind, and that if they don't pay it at a certain time. It needs to be, it needs to be either a letter or an actual contact with the citizen, the customer. And that needs to be incorporated in our policy, addition to the ten days, and addition to the roll call. If we're concerned about the account building up for two months, they have to pay the whole thing. But they need to be notified, we need to have positive notification prior to cutting the water off after the ten day roll call.
If I may, I have spoken with citizens who have contacted me. I have had citizens admit during the phone call, they do not open their bills when they receive them. And I have also had citizens admit, they have not given numbers to customer service, and they do not receive robocalls. So I encourage all citizens to please contact customer service, give them a phone number, so that if your bill is late, you will receive a robocall. And I know Diane is here, I'd like for Diane to address some of these issues that's been brought up today. She has done a lot of research already on several of these issues.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, getting money from anyone, it doesn't make you unhappy. But we've worked very hard at Financial Services with the, what, ten minutes? With the new customer service policy. We have a Facebook picture, we've put it out on Facebook, what bills to do, cutoff day, so forth and so on. As a courtesy, in this county, and this is prior to my arrival, the month of December, we did not cut off the water. Or we'll be adding on December twenty-seventh, cutting off your water. So we let the month of December aside, you do pay your late fee, but we do not do the regular late fee. So what happened for the month of January, when that rolled around? On January twenty-first, we sent out our robocalls, because we were having for the Martin Luther King holiday on the nineteenth. We had six hundred customers that had not paid their bill by that time. And we were to cut off on the twenty-seventh, we had snow and ice. We decided to back off that day because it wasn't a real safe day to have all meter readers on the shoulder of the road. So we'd be cut off on the morning of the twenty-eighth, that number was down to one hundred customers. This is with consolidated billing, and that was two months. Previously with the consolidated billing, we've gotten that down to fifty cutoffs per month. Prior to that, on the two cycle billing, we would have like eighty customers per cutoff cycle. So we worked very hard to get this number down, because each time you get a number down, by one, this two trips on, maybe we just don't have to go out to cut off or disconnect. And we really worked hard on this. If for some reason the bills are a day late going out with our billing service, we give them an extra day before we do the ten percent late fee. We have sent flyers out, we've had them posted in the post offices, in the local stores, we put flyers in the bills. We put a notice on the front of the bill. And the notice is, we eat that cost every month, it's like a hundred and twenty-five dollar memo, just to put a little verb up there. And for several months, we ran it, just to better serve our customers. Please give us a current phone number. And when we have a personal contact, please give us a good phone number. There's slips at the payment desk, so you can fill out your name and give us a current phone number. When we do official payments, and there's a phone number that comes in with that payment, we cross reference and make sure. We're putting in phone numbers every time we get the chance, so we're working very hard in that aspect. But as far as bringing this up to, to date, to speed, we're trying to bring it to the twentieth century, not just the twenty-first century. This is the week when we're getting our light box payments in. We have an employee who's already done the electronic payment, just to track it, to see how fast that's going to come in. We put the notices out there to please make sure your bank has your current account number, so we can receive your payment form rapidly. We're trying to work with the customers the best way we can to get payments in as painless possible. We don't want the twenty-five dollar service fee, we just want you to pay your bill. Ben, we have four, five hundred customers, and we get it down to fifty customers that have not paid their bill, that's not a bad percentage. And we'll say they were paid a difference.
And also, if you have a clean record for twelve months.
Right, that's the one that we talked about, that we had the issue with, and they even admitted they were late paying in December. So they automatically took them off the list, up a role that you are responsible for your fees, but we will rescind cutting you off. And we do try to go back on each one of those, and it's, that's one-on-one contact, someone has to go back and check that record.
So the person, let's say, and all this makes mistakes, you know, we can slip up sometime. But if a person made a mistake, you look back at the twelve preceding months, you would not cut my water off, you'd just roll it over to the next month. The incident that you were talking about, they were late in December, and then didn't pay in January.
Well, the December, the point is, is that we have an in-house courtesy policy, so we don't cut water off in December. So basically, you say a person was late in December, you don't give them that policy anyway.
But they were late paying their bill.
I understand that. And believe me, I think the water department's one great job. I'm one of the first to give you all. But I'm not talking about your work ethics or the efficiency or proficiency of the water department. I'm talking about the policy, where Commissioner Stink, Vetco does not cut your lights off if you miss one month's bill. You know, it's, if we get it down to fifty people, that's good. But if I've got the one eighty-five year old lady, who may not, you know, she may be sick or she, you know, whatever. And she gets a roll call or doesn't respond. We're putting vulnerable citizens, even if it's just a woman, in jeopardy. I do think there's room for improvement on our policy. I can say kudos to the water department, bringing in revenues, that's what we want to do. But cutting off under one notice without some type of written correspondence. Or whether it be a knock on the door, or a change in policy that says that when a person goes out to cut off the water meter, if, if a person wants to pay them in person, or so. Well, that's it. You know, I cannot see if a person comes to cut the water off, and I've got, we're only talking thirty dollars here, most, thirty, forty dollars. We're not talking two, three hundred dollars. Well, that's when you're, that's when you're, well, it depends on, yeah.
I saw a lady come in yesterday to pay her bill, get her water turned back on, it was two hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, well, and, and some of that may be where they may have some farm chicken houses or something, you know, if it's commercial. But normally, for the normal resident of East County, you're talking anywhere, I don't think it's over thirty dollars. But I think we need to take a look at it. I would ask, let's just take a look at it. I'm not going to say what we need to do, but I think we need to take a look at it, at the manager, manager, supervisor, and if there is an improvement. Bring it to the board, and let's, and see if, if, you know, we can agree with it, and as passing. But I do think we should take a look at it, take those considerations.
I would like to add, it's obvious to me that certainly, customer friendly, and in front of the folks in East County, did not know all that went on. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Diane, you said you were dying for about fifty a month, are these, I think I heard you say, if you go to
Are these, I think I heard you say, to go to answer this question, are these the same fifty every month?
A lot of them, we've turned them as repeat addresses. Yes, they are.
Consider, certainly those of us who have neighbors maybe who are elderly or someone in your family or neighbor who might think, you know, sometimes forget things. But you can put more than one number on the bill so that if Sally Peter, who might be getting a little forgetful, you can put by number on it so that I would get a call that she didn't pay her bill, so I could come in and take care of it. Is that how you're doing?
Yes, we can put multiple numbers up there. For children that are concerned about their parents or children that live states away, that are overseeing this. And please put my number up there. So we do that all the time.
So they get a call, but it's not that.
The, the water process, policy and everything has been tremendously improved. I mean, a couple of years ago, we made a lot of changes on it, and those changes were, the majority of them were to improve for the customer.
Yes.
So we've come a long way with that. Now, I remember some conversation earlier revolved around, and we each have our responsibility to take care of these things. And I would also echo what Commissioner Jordan said about going back and maybe looking at, not necessarily a whole plan, take this particular situation that occurred and take it from the beginning and sit down with four or five people who are all involved or whatever, and say, what did we do right? What could we do differently? And if we had done something differently, would it have improved the situation? I got a phone call about the matter. And the part that alarmed me the most, the person who called me about it was very humble. And said, again, I made a mistake. One of the biggest concerns was that the gentleman and his father were present. So when you're looking at what we could have done differently, and there's repeat offender, and then there's habitual repeat offender. I'm gonna ask if either one of those applies. But I honestly can't tell you, when you take the Commissioner's hat off, if I was standing by my water meter and you were gonna cut my water off, I can't tell you what would happen. I mean, we could actually, if our meter reader was right there putting that lock on, he could get himself, I see Sheriff back here. There are some people he could get in trouble with and put himself in harm's way. Would you agree, Sheriff? It could escalate very quickly. So I would just say, as you go back and look at it, take all those things into consideration. And if we see area for improvement, you know, we may not because the pipeline is pretty good. We may not see any area for improvement, but we take with an open mind, what could we have done differently? We might come up with something.
Well, this gentleman wasn't without water because he cut the water off. He brought a lock in with him and said, charge me for it, which we did, we haven't got likely. So, I mean, at least he was honest with that.
He was actually humble when he spoke to me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there a motion? Was it Jordan?
Well, I, my motion would be that I would ask a manager in the Water Department to take a look at our current policy and procedure to look, to see if we can improve it for the benefit of the customers without jeopardizing the county's collection ability prior to cutting off the water. My recommendation would be some type of personal contact or a letter. I would make that as a motion, that they look into that part of the policy to see where you can improve customer service on cutoffs.
Okay, I'm not sure as I have this type phrase this. Melissa, did you get that? Would you mind repeating it?
Sure. So look at the policy and procedures to see if improvements can be made to improve customer service quality when cutting off.
To improve service to the customer prior to cutoffs. And it's gonna go a little bit deeper than that, you know, as far as what they're prior, record payments and all that. But the whole gist of it is, is that we need to see what steps we need to take to make contact with the customer prior to cutting off the water other than just a robocall.
Okay. Everyone heard the motion? We need to repeat that? Okay, is there any, there are secondhand discussion?
I have a question, but I would, it's not directly on this motion, so I don't know if I would.
Is that pertaining to the?
It's pertaining to the water, but I wanted to ask, why don't we ask Sandy and Diane, are there any provisions to collect by credit card or pay by credit card?
They can't online right now, not if we're in the system that Diane was working on. I reckon I've got flights probably down in the business too.
I was thinking about the man standing and watching. If he could have picked up the phone and given him a credit card, he's not gonna pay.
No, we don't accept credit card payments over the phone. They can call our third-party vendor. But at that point, once you've been placed on that disconnect list, you have to pay with a certified payment. It either has to be cash, money order, or certified check once you've been placed on that disconnect list.
But you can pay by credit card three days earlier than that.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes. We do still accept credit card payments, but just online or by phone.
The customer machine used to be there beside the tax window.
Right, that's right. And we quit doing that.
It has not been done since we were in this building.
That is one thing that we're looking at. We know that's a big demand and we want to get that back.
But you can't still pay online and all, but.
But when you pay with official payments online, it's a third party. We get it the next day.
And it could even include when they're there to cut off, that if they have contact with the customer, I mean, is there any way they can receive, pay that or?
We can't have the guys in the field accepting payments. I mean, that to me is, there's so many issues there. Security, they'll be carrying cash, you'd have to receive it. I see a lot of issues there. You know, we can sit down certainly and discuss our options. Those are things that we had talked about when we put the policy in place, but we simply can't have our meter readers collecting cash out in the field. There's between their security and, you know, the control controls. There are so many issues in place there. But we'll certainly sit down and discuss it. Like you said, go through this whole process and see.
Security alone, the security alone would rule it out.
And I think the aliments would rule it out.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of concerns there. You know, the concern I have with sending another letter or requiring contact before we cut the water off, if somebody hasn't given us a phone number and we send them a letter, we still don't know if they got that letter. So we don't have any way of really ensuring definite, you know, personal contact before we cut them off. Because we don't have any, we know the bill went to them. And they may or may not have gotten the bill. If we put a letter in the mail, we don't know if they get that letter. You know, the phone calls, we do the robocalls, and we've done that, and we've asked people, and some people just refuse to give us phone numbers.
Yeah, well, the intent is that we've exhausted reasonable methods. That's the intent. I mean, you know, you send a letter, they may not even look at that and wait to get personally a letter.
Exactly.
At least we've exhausted all reasonable things. That's trying to contact.
And the other issue, you know, is manpower. There only have three women in that office. There's only, there are only so many hours in the day. And they spend, what, two days each month trying to contact people and bring that list down. And they spend countless hours contacting people and calling people and trying to get things in place and verifying who's not made the last twelve months' payments. I mean, it's a process that if you're not there, you just can't even imagine. And they spend countless hours trying to make sure that we don't cut off any water for people that we happen to tend to contact.
Okay, is that motion on the table? To study the issue or to look at the issue for improvements, if there can be improvements? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, Lieutenant, make the study. Okay, moving along with departmental reports. Didn't want to have. I see Mr. Headpath is here. Anything that you may tell us from the Water Department? We have a lot of work.
I have a question, Mr. Headpath.
Okay.
The manhole across from the sewer, disperging the pumps, one fifty-eight that brought from the Commerce Park. Manhole's in that ditch.
Which one, that serving?
Well, the one that's in the ditch that collects, that then collects water.
When you're heading eastbound, are you referring to the one on the Commerce Park side or the one on Honey Fox side?
Commerce Park side.
Okay.
All right, have we sealed that?
All of those are supposed to be sealed. We started yesterday and we're still in the process going and checking several different manholes because we are having infiltration issues and trying to narrow it down. We do have a decent stream of water coming. We checked it behind the credit union. So we do know we have water somewhere between there and the library that's entering. So I'm gonna go through the corner post, the in post and the corner post at Commerce Drive and something. That's our next step.
Right, but that's causing a lot of advocacy when I spray the water we don't need.
It is. I have been in contact with Deener. They are aware that we're having to spray in submarginal conditions and wet grounds. They would rather have us do that in a controlled manner versus a lagoon overflow. So we're addressing that as hard as we can get. And we had a ten-inch water main bus at Front Door to plant Monday morning. That was prepared back online during lunch, or by lunchtime.
Near the highway? Near the highway?
No, they were at Front Door to plant.
Really?
About twelve foot from Front Door.
This was close?
We didn't have to go far.
You were putting a face on it. The dirt's probably not to do it, right?
That is the third or fourth repair on that one ten-inch main. Couple times prior to my tenure here. Then this is the second time I've replaced it. That might be something we want to look at going in and try to replace with a ten-inch ductile iron. There's a lot of slam and water hammer that goes on. The pumps kick on and off. That's another update I'd like to do with the plant sometime in the near future is change out the starter drives on our fifty and seventy-horse motors to a soft start. I've made that transition on a couple of my wells. It's worked very well. When it ramps up, it gives it the half average and it gradually eases it up to full ounce and full draw. And now, what they considered soft start when this was designed was a half a second delay till it kicks to full power.
Is it five dollars or ten dollars?
I think it's twelve point nine. The soft start transition is gonna be roughly five thousand dollars per motor or per start drive unit. There's four in the plant. So that's not a significant cost considering they're replacing the ductile iron. Figuring somewhere around seven to nine thousand. And that range to replace that short section because there are a couple elbows involved and a valve involved. So you're looking roughly thirty thousand dollars worth of upgrades that a thirty-five-year-old system potentially could save you hundreds of thousands in the future.
That's between thirty and thirty-five hundred. Excuse me, ask that question, man, it was built.
The plant was built in seventy-seven, seventy-eight, came online in seventy-nine, went through the major renovations early eighties because they were over treating the water because of water quality was high enough. They did not require softeners and some of the extra additives. At the time the system come online, it was the most technologically advanced water treatment system in North Carolina. And it was overdesigned. So they pulled all the softener tanks, the pH, all the monitoring systems out and all the tail treatment with the chlorine gas, which is mandated by the state.
What is the service, expected service life of the pumps? Does it talk about proper maintenance?
Proper maintenance? Nobody can really give me a true number. The systems haven't been online this style long enough to really give a true number. We have replaced some drive units, have replaced two since I've been there. So they made it thirty-five years. The other two, which is the high-side system, which was built and designed in ninety-nine and two thousand when the Hazleton Water Tower come online. And the system was split to a northern quadrant and a southern quadrant. So they're twenty-five years old. They're ten, twelve years behind the originals. But it's a different style, different design, different oil mechanism and lubrication mechanism versus the original design. I would feel comfortable saying proper maintenance, forty years, forty-five years.
So okay, but it three-quarter life?
Yes. So we're looking at some time here in the next fifteen years or so for a major overhaul upgrade. I was hoping the soft starts, it could prolong that. And it'd be a whole lot easier on our collector, our distribution system and lines out in the field. Primarily the problems we've seen in leaks we repair when it comes to water mains or where the mains were properly installed. It was sitting on a stump that wasn't removed when the line was laid or bloat over top of a culvert or some high wedge underneath a culvert. That's what we're seeing are problems, with the exception of the ten-inch main in front of the plant and one eight-inch main that's split in some areas.
Well, thank you for that. And let's try to keep them running as long as possible. Okay, planning. Oh, you have stuff. We'll say the people later. We have some correspondence in here. Crystal, you need to tell us, you have your report. You have anything to add to your report? We do have some correspondence in our package. The North Carolina Association of Payment Commissioners is having that district meeting on March the twenty fifth. At Williamson, that generally we go. We need to tell Melissa to, if you're planning on going that evening, it's at Williamson on March twenty-fifth. Also, there is a Chilone Swamp Land, Chilone Game Land meeting, the wildlife is putting on. On the sixteenth of this month, they were at sixteen at Murchus Mill Pond. They want public input to help guide management and user activities for the next ten years. And since we are part of the Chilone Swamp Land and it is here in East County, it's on the sixteenth of February. The time is seven P.M. They're looking into updating our management plan and user activities for the next ten years. So there are upcoming events. And our county manager has graciously built out a calendar, provided a budget, starting with February the twenty-fourth. And that one, I believe, is from. About when, I believe, is from 4 to 7. And then it goes all the way down through June. Hopefully you've had time to look over there if there's any problems.
I will, I will have to come quick. 4 to 7. Possibly 4 to 6.
It depends on how much discussion we have. That's why I have listed that three hours.
But we could possibly be.
Right, we could possibly be finished by 6.
Disgusting.
My assumption was new commissioner, new chair and new county manager, we might need three hours.
Okay, also from Senator Cook requesting if we have any local bills that we want to send up to the General Assembly. Sometimes a locality has a bill they could like or to be introduced. That has to be in and drafted by March 3rd. Occasionally counties ask for something specific to the county. They were all the dates that I have. Okay, we do not need, why don't we take a? Okay, we'll do a five-minute break. If it's that way, we'll come back to the public hearing. Thank you. Seems like we lost some of our pride. I think it's got to be witching hour called for lunch. With our agenda, we are dying to the public hearing. We have, for our consideration, amendments to the personnel ordinance. If you remember last month, we had this presented to us for study. And we have, it's here today for us to make a decision on the changes. They were highlighted in yellow. And what is pleasure of the board? Oh, okay, okay. Let us not go into the public hearing. I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So move.
Motion has been made to enter in the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're not in the public hearing. Do you have any comments from the public? I see no one making their way toward the podium, so we, there evidently is no public comment. Do we have, have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So move.
Motion has been made in second to go out of public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we are in public hearing. Now, do I have, for our force consideration, we have this ordinance before us. What is pleasure forward?
I, as I look over this, the changes certainly are something that needs to be made. I did have a comment on page one, all of my pages, about all of them, I have two pages.
Right, some of the, that issue will be taken care of whenever it is, whatever is decided upon day, this page numbers will be.
Correct.
Yes. You'll tell us what section?
Section 321. And where we have active capacity as recommended by Springfield. First of all, are we gonna leave that in there?
No. No. What is capitalized will not be left in there. That was actually for some notes whenever personnel were discussed this position or this section.
I would, I would recommend that under A, we say when an employee is assigned, be required, I would like to see that changed to assigned, rather than take it by himself. Other than that, the only other question I would have is, I was saying this here. We initially, several years ago, approved the inclement weather policy for three days, I believe. And now we're basically doing away with the inclement, we call it pettily?
No, that's miscellaneous leave. That's, that's a totally separate situation. Incentive weather policy, I don't believe was changed in anything that we've done. I believe that was left in the act.
Sort of miscellaneous leave?
We call it pettily, it's in the policy, it's miscellaneous leave.
And that's one of the recommendations, that it not become miscellaneous, that it become petty.
So that is where you get your three days of inclement weather leave?
No. Totally unrelated. Incentive weather leave is, is a totally separate issue. They only get incentive weather leave if we have an incentive weather event and county manager or his or her designated states has an incentive weather delay or closing, then they get that leave. That's basically administrative leave. Their pettily is theirs to use as they see fit and they get that every year.
Okay.
No, sir, that's one of the changes that's in here. Floating holiday, the recommendation has been to remove a floating holiday, which as described to me was your birthday. However, because so many new people not knowing what floating holiday was, including myself, and the way payroll has to calculate that, it was always calculated under the pettily and it created an issue with floating holiday, you were required to take it as eight hours a day. But because of staffing, they were not always able to keep up with someone using what was the floating holiday, eight hours versus pettily. So it created a payroll nightmare, timekeeping nightmare. Recommendation is to remove that floating holiday from the list of holidays under section 6.1 and include that as holiday, I mean as pettily. So some of the notes that are listed under 6.1 holidays where it has a line through floating holiday and there's a red, says it is recommended to remove this holiday and give as an additional day of pettily. Of course, that will not be in the final approved ordinance if this floating holiday is removed. It will just be listed under pettily, which is further.
On page 24.
Okay, thank you.
Remove.
And having this, pettily has been changing the number of days.
Pettily is advantageous to people where they might want to go to school to see their child in a program, they won't take two hours. You could take that in increments of 15 minutes.
Correct.
Or they have a doctor's appointment and they're going to leave at three instead of five.
Right, and pettily begins January 1st and ends December 31st. Anything that is not used does not roll over.
Okay.
If it does exceed that, that kind of measure, does that automatically go back to regular leave?
No, you use it, it's use it or lose it.
And comments or questions?
None pertaining to that, but just for clarification purposes, thinking about the permission that was brought to our attention about the changes required to.
Assign?
Yes. Does that make any difference in human resources or looking at, as fully required as opposed to assign?
I don't think so. I think the word assign, it may be, may be a better because require kind of leaves it up to an employee to decide if they think they're required to think assign may be a better word because then somebody would have to assign them to that position.
I think the word in this, in this context, I think the word required, it sort of leads, sort of leads to me the thought that, well, I thought it was required, but you can never say I thought it was assigned unless it was assigned.
Yes.
And when Chairman Jordan made his comment, I also was thinking about documentation. When it's assigned, not the word documentation needs to be added in here.
No, it will be documented for our people.
It will be documented, sure, signed by date.
And we have paperwork, we have two forms that have to be completed before any changes in the payroll system are made. And we have a personnel action form and a payroll transaction form, and both of those would have to be completed prior to any changes taken place at our office.
I think that's the word to be on the next page.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any additional comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Chairman, I made a motion that we adopt the personnel ordinance with the changes that have been made for implementation.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve the personnel ordinance with the changes that have been made. It's been properly made, is second. Any additional comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So that is approved. Thank you for the work of the personnel and human resources. I think we have document nine that is up today. And hopefully will eliminate any problems that we might have. Okay, we are now going to the concrete building, famous concrete building. Okay, personnel board recommendations. Personnel board would like to recommend the planning and permitting technician job description and the facilities technician custodian job description to be approved as presented. These have been brought forth looking out of the board and approved for your consideration.
The first document, first two documents are actually documents that were used to create the facilities technician custodian, and that is page 113.
Minus 110.
And then the next one is the planning and permitting technician job description that has been updated.
Chairman, I would ask that we take a look at the planning and permitting technician on page 116, where it talks about the employee knowledge, performance standards knowledge. On page 116, it says the employee must have knowledge of policies. I would recommend adding and ordinances, have knowledge of policies and ordinances related to the building inspection, planning and zoning. There are many times where telephone discussions, wherever questions come, that they need to have a knowledge of those ordinances. They not be skilled in them, but they need to.
This is second page, the job description.
Yes.
Policies and ordinances.
Certainly. And they should have that book right there that they can pull through, find the information. Any additions or some corrections?
I'll make a motion that we approve the two job descriptions as presented by personnel board with one modification, adding an ordinances.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second is properly been made to approve the personnel board's recommendations with the modification in the planning and permitting technician to include and ordinances. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So you can go ahead with those. Okay, now to the famous concrete building. Oh, the register of deeds.
Okay.
Okay, the register of deeds should be placed on your. Yes, it is.
No, this is different. This is the register of deeds for job description that we approved this morning at Personnel Board Committee.
It should be up here on the table somewhere.
There were a few changes that needed to be made. The position does close this Friday and we wanted the official job description ready so that when Kathy Porter does interviews for, for that position, she will be able to hand him the most updated job description. The, the job description now includes on the second page, information about lifting up to 20, 10 pounds, and then the words reconciling daily bank statements that was taken out as well, as well as one other that I do not remember, I didn't have a copy in front of me. There were very minor changes. This is to better reflect the actual duties of that position.
Yeah, well, it was a physical requirements, I remember. Because if you've been in the register of deeds office, there's some heavy books and all have to do with lifting.
And there is sweeping and mending required.
Yes. The reconciling of the bank statements was taken, aye. And up here under work functions, the first paragraph, you see a strike at bankruptcies. Under the work.
She is, that person is no longer responsible for that. Yes.
And also.
Also, maps, register of deeds have that or.
Well, it's a right by agreements, it's separation agreements, assuming names play.
It's only removing the word.
They were the only changes.
And would it be exerted on this?
It's both, depending on where the books are located. Because some are very close to the ground and some are above my head.
Chairman, I would like to improve the deputy register of deeds job description at my.
Okay, a motion is made in second. Any discussion? Okay, the motion before us is to approve a job description for the deputy register of deeds with the modifications that were moved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, finally, the.
Okay, finally, the concrete building. As you know, we did not sell the building on build deals several months ago. The person who had expressed interest in it is no longer interested in the building. Question for you today is, what is your desire to do with that building? It has taken three places in the parking lot, which we hope to have resurfaced and ringlined this spring. The question is, if we move it, we would have to have funds to move it. We would also need a location to move that building and have it set up properly. I have had some departments ask, can we use it for storage? Can it be left where it is so we can use it for storage? And if it will be moved and so, can we use it for storage? The inside temperature is fairly constant from what I have been told by the people who have been in and out of that building at various times of the year. We just need to know what the desired commissioners have received with that building.
I didn't get by.
According to billing, when a crane brought it in, and it was not a metal tech crane, they did not have a crane orange enough to lift it. That he said from what he remembers, it was a contractor who was doing work for metal tech that the county contracted with to move that building.
Could it be recycled material?
There's all this concrete.
Some people recycling.
And there is some metal inside.
I was thinking.
And on the outside, of course.
I was thinking that expense wise, we could hire somebody with a jackhammer to go there and knock the concrete off the building.
The walls are about this thick.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. When I said jack, take a jackhammer and knock the concrete, then a bucket, a tractor, haul it away, and then recycle the metal would be the least expensive thing to do. In fact, if you contact the guy out here on Highway one fifty-eight and say, "We've got a free building for you," he might take it open.
Big bucks.
Big bucks.
And he may, like I said, you can also recycle it. He may know someone that would recycle it. And we'll see if he gets the metal out.
It's got the big hooks in there for lifting it with the crane. They're connected to some old metal along the way in that building and in the bottom. So there's some thick, you don't connect thick metal to thin metal. So wherever the other metal is in that building, that thing hooks connect to this stuff.
I think we're restricted by how we can dispose of this. You know, we pray it so to us that we would have to declare it as nonusable or something that we don't want to use. But I think Jack, Commissioner Owen said, "See what big bucks thinks about it. Cover it up, come take a look at it. And if they can recycle it, take it without any cost or little cost in the county, and you know, the next meeting we need to discuss it."
It's already been declared surplus, but I'll have to double check. I'd have to do private sales and private donations.
Yeah, well, it would be, it's going to be either disposal, declared, for that matter, some disposals.
To cut through a hard work for you. If he wants it free, we're just hiring fifty dollars to the slater, to the monash. We don't have to worry about the donation.
And therefore circumvent the surplus.
Yeah, we're hiring the demolition and then give fifty dollars for the monash and hire him to come and do it.
Well, it's already been declared surplus. It's already been declared surplus. It just answered your question.
I was going to go back deals.
Yeah, deals.
And surplus and donation, disposal, it's a disposal. They've got different requirements on it. Just need to take a look at how to do it. Like I say, once you contacted us, to what he said.
I've got two people in mind. Would it be okay for me to, I mean, because we're at this point, would it be okay for me to call two people and ask them if they'd be interested in getting rid of it?
And we can, and I'll go back and look into all the proper channels on how to get rid of some of the items.
I'll call them when you can.
Okay, I don't think that requires any formal action by us right now. You gotta bring it back. Okay. We also have a proclamation for the historical significance of the Chona Indians. If you remember, a couple of months later, they had a deal. And Mrs. Shavis has given approval, she has approved of what we were doing here. And so I bring this for you as proclamation.
And the date will be corrected. Well, there's a couple of other dates at the bottom, so they will be corrected. This is just a copy of the one from last month. Because of all the discussion that took place, we just used the same copy from last month this morning. It's the same as originally presented in January.
Chairman Allen, make a motion that we approve the resolution for the historical significance of the Chona Indians as presented to the board with the modification of dates.
And I would like, just for the purpose of discussion, Chairman Jordan and Chairman is in our research that it appears certainly that the Chona band up and joined the Tuscaloans and thus became extinct.
I must agree, Matt, I don't need to cut you off, but we've got to have a second before we discuss.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, now you can discuss.
Thank you, thank you. So that's, I just bring that up for the purpose of knowledge, if you will, if they did this fear, if we want, or at least entertain the thought of adding the fact that we've recognized that the Chona no longer exist as an Indian.
I think that's where some of the questions and concerns came, they, those that came to us, say that they do exist.
The descendants did say that they, that they. I think from.
But would you produce any genealogy to prove that?
Yeah, our discussion sort of, they wanted us to say that they do exist without them giving us proof.
And without Bureau of Indian Affairs or anyone else, or even the tribes that just recognize them.
Having had that conversation, Commissioner Prin, and two other meetings, and I think that this is the most accurate document to address that.
I wouldn't have been faulting it either, but in that period of time, now therefore, due to give back from family, it's kind of historical recognition that the Chona Indians did exist in Gates County.
I said, not a recognition to the Chona, Chona Indians in Gates County.
Like I said, they still do exist. I didn't say historical recognition that the Chona Indians, Chona Indians did exist in Gates County.
Or once existed.
Yeah.
I wouldn't believe that, saying it's real, is that?
Well.
I wouldn't mean that it exists.
The thing about it is, if we, that's a little bit legal because what evidence can we use to say that it don't exist?
Well, the historical society, I researched that, that what the historical society, yes, kind of research as pertaining to the Chona, except the cause of diseases and what have that they, they disprove.
That, that was the historical society.
Yes, yes, historical society.
I think that you will find in some of the historical writings that there was a small hearts epidemic in the Sogunis Islands that says they became extinct. But, you know, extinct, you know, there might have been someone out there that was as an off, not as a Chona Indian at that point. I don't know if we can say that positively, but certainly they were no longer recognized as existing. Not saying that weren't. Listen, all of a sudden, nothing like to have Chona Indian blood in us if we did our DNA. Or a lot of people in the Gatscan have Indian blood in. And I think part of this is that they may want to be recognized, but there is a protocol that state and wire should go through the, recognize as a tribe. So.
If you take the word in, puts the word of, it doesn't mean present, it doesn't mean current, but it doesn't take away from the view.
Okay.
So it would read, hereby proclaim Gates County historical significance, recognition to the Chona Indians of Gates County. And we do know that they were here. So of, I think, there are two letters to take here.
Does it fail to do, does that make a carrot for you?
I'm good with any of it. That still seems like real, let's say that they do exist. Personally, I don't see it say did exist, but that's, and we recognize that they were here, but we haven't approved that they still are.
Like I say, I might say I got a little children, I know that.
Yeah.
But I will understand of that. You know, we can say, well, yes, I did, but you never know about.
Well, if they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I agree with Jack. The wording, you know, if you say Chona Indians of Gates County, whether that's present or past tense, you don't have any English that you can write down. I think it'd be either, you know. That way, from a legal standpoint, we are saying the art, we are saying the art.
How about you do this? I'm not an English teacher. Now, therefore, the Gatscan Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Gates County historical significance, recognition of the Chona Indians to Gates County, North Carolina.
I like that word, though.
The recognition of Chona to the Gates County. I mean, we're recognizing that historical significance.
Most basically, that you're.
And English teacher, where should we begin?
Well, I think we're close enough.
Now, did we, I forgot what, did we have, we had it.
Motion to second, did it amend?
Okay, second needs to be amended and then the original.
I amend my motion to approve the proclamation for historical significance of Chona Indians to be approved with the wording as discussed.
Okay, who did second?
Second.
Okay, a motion is on the floor to approve the proclamation for the historical significance of Chona Indians as amended. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, let's go through a few of these before we take off. All right, break the line. First item is a resolution setting register of deeds office hours.
This was presented by Kathy Morton. She is out town this week at training. She has found that several other counties have passed this resolution because they also have very small register of deeds offices, typically two full-time people. And when there are two people in there, it's easier for someone to take a lunch break and the office still be covered. However, because she is currently the only full-time employee that we have in the register of deeds office, she would like a resolution from the county commissioners letting her take lunch from twelve to one when she is the only person available. This resolution does allow her to do this, and she is hoping to have someone on board hopefully by the end of February, so then the office would not need to be closed. However, if someone is sick and a part-time person comes in, they would be allowed to put it off for their lunch hour as well.
So this would only be used when there was.
When there's one person in the office.
Journal letter doesn't say that you have to have a continuous operation.
And every, I mean, other counties have done this. I think she said Taro and I can't believe, I can't remember the, do you remember the Because they have run into the same situation. There's one person there and they are not allowed a lunch hour or a break time, even if it's not a full hour.
Very disappointing to have an office closed, however, if it's necessary. Got it?
Okay, do that.
This would be the only office in our system that would do this.
Correct, but this resolution is only for the register of deeds. Other offices are fortunate enough to have people that they can ask to answer the phone or assist, perhaps a little easier than the register of deeds.
Now, it is going to be consistent.
The resolution says twelve to one.
But on the days when there is no one else available.
All right, it says whereas there are only two employees in the register of deeds office and when both are present, each takes a separate lunch break so that the office can remain open to the public. But when one employee is out for sickness, workshops, training, vacation, et cetera, should close for a one-hour lunch break. However, there has been no official resolution to that effect. Now therefore be it resolved. And then it goes on to say that it will, that the may get needed, close for lunch between the hours of twelve and one.
And if it is closed, I'm sure that we can assign it, say we'll be back at.
Yes.
I guess the thing I'm thinking about is, we've got attorneys, paralegals, Camden, Earthwood, Bertie, whatever it is, dominated by the service years past, you know, twelve to one, and all of a sudden they're trying to do a closing or whatever, and they get here to get, they got written out.
If I may, Kathy's not so much worried about herself because she recognizes the fact that she is the elected official. She is more concerned about the other person if they are employed in Gates County and they are in there for one hour and not allowed to take a lunch break.
It's all personality issues.
Yes.
And that could be a concern.
And that's where her concern is coming from, not so much from her. She said she's not so much worried about taking lunch.
Well, this is just one of those things where we might hear about it again, but I don't hear that. Like that's some phone calls.
And speaking from someone who has spent many hours in the register of deeds office, all of the time, you will hear probably, somebody comes and is playing, you will hear probably.
The inconsistency, the fact that it wouldn't, I'm not promoting that we do it every day, but the fact that it's not the same every day is a concern. but the fact that it's not the same every day is a concern that I have. Yet you know the public, the public, the public doesn't know when somebody sits, so it isn't.
You know, if it's not passed, speaking to the county manager and having to deal with the personnel issues, then I would like you to be aware that there may be other people who then may be asked to be pulled from other departments to assist with this office during lunchtime, if necessary.
Just make you aware of that issue as well.
Well, you can deprive somebody of a lunch hour. And a lunch hour is not, I'm eating my soup and I break to go help somebody, I break down to the front. So I realize that we can't deprive somebody of their lunch hour. But like I said, my, my opinion is that it's not like that every day. Now Billy, if you ask the preachers, the attorneys, paralegals, would they say they would rather see it all the time like that or just occasionally like that? You know, it's, for them, it's all about, well, I don't need to go until one with their back.
Yeah, it's another one thing. If somebody drives to a hospital, we're going to get you five minutes after twelve, they can be upset.
Although, and the thing that is not one of those learning experiences where, oh yeah, I remember they're closed from four to eleven, because you don't know when they're going to be closed. One positive about it is that the, the time will be consistent from twelve to one. So they could get used to the fact that, well, I don't know, well, they, it could be closed at twelve to one, so I'll just go early. So let me ask this question. I get here at eleven thirty.
And you have to wait until four o'clock.
And you have to wait.
And if you'd like, you don't have to act upon it. You could, if you'd rather table it and have Kathy come back and she can explain her reasoning behind making this request, talk to other counties who do have this in place.
What you mentioned, well, if you have someone to come in and just keep the office open for that hour, would probably not be a bad idea. Most everybody that goes into the register of deeds office does not need any help. They just need doors. And that would probably, if somebody would be willing to do that, and say it happened once a month, it's not a big deal. I think that would be a good solution, closing the door.
I think Kathy's doing the right thing about addressing. She's concerned about employees. I don't, I don't particularly like the concept of somebody coming from another department in there because of the phone. They don't know how to respond, they don't have to answer the question. I mean, they get to take notes. They don't, they're not giving any touch of service that.
Kathy, hello, please. But they would just like wait for the person to come in. But they could go in and do their research like Billy does.
A whole hour. If, if, if it was, would be allowed thirty minutes. And, and closed if, like, kind of for thirty minutes, if a county employee from another department was not able to buy backup or, or provide. What does it take to, to go into the, you know, register of deeds office and assist someone? Obviously, you know, they're not going to know where the bookshelf numbers are. And many of the things that are normal knowledge to someone that works in that office. But adjusted, you know, a whole hour is a lot of work that shut down an office that you've been elected, this is elected office.
As I said, Kathy is not worried about herself. Kathy is worried about if this is an employee who is not elected, who is a county employee, is not allowed to take their lunch hour. There, there is the potential, because of recent conversations, that there could be a problem. And my recommendation is, based on conversation, is to ask Kathy to come back in March and you can address it with Kathy so she can, if she'd like, share in more detail some of scenarios that she has.
Is there, pardon me for interrupting, but is there another solution such as part-time?
There is one part-time person who is currently working now.
Now, what was, what was F B S L A required?
As well as one half. Sandy, I came in recently.
Thirty minutes? Thirty minutes, it's not an hour.
Well, but our policy is one hour.
Personal, well, some of the, the elected office.
Well, like I said, Kathy's not concerned about herself. She has made that very clear.
And we can't violate our personal.
This would be the position that you just approved the job description for, this person coming in.
Yeah, the person under, in the register of deeds office, come under the requirements of personnel, as we, they are regular county employees, but we do not have Congress over there, you know, like Sheriff's Department. Their deputies, Sheriff's, his Congress over there. But then we still let them do it, rather than a county employee there under all the personnel policy order.
The beginning of the ordinance gives the exclusions, but things such as that hours worked, whatever, it's all good.
What was our personal order to acquire?
We weren't, we weren't expecting to find. Was it seven and a half hour?
I know this is not, not the consistent either, but, and yeah, how many events, how many different dates we've gone about.
I think Kathy has had several trainings lately because she did not attend when she was the only person in the office. So now she's, she's been attending because there was someone there. So that's why I said that might be something you'd.
I would.
To discuss with Kathy.
I would almost be, until it presents itself as an issue, I would almost be inclined to say, let's, let's fix this sign. And when that situation occurs, put it in the window, office closed, temporarily closed, return at boom, return at one. Rather than, rather than do, than do this, I don't see it, I don't see it happening a whole lot. Is, is there a possibility that those hours would be stagnant for that part-time person?
Well, that's.
In a specific time?
Kathy has been using her as needed currently. For example, she's working all this, all of this week, if I remember correctly, because Kathy is out of town.
But then you run into problems with part-time and the help.
You can't bring in part-time person for an hour, it's probably won't teach that.
Kathy's not the kind of person who's going to abuse whatever we did. Integrity wise, I know, I know that. But you know, the resolution, we're not just talking about Kathy, we're talking about the next person.
This, this allows it, close it for an hour. If you kept it open, you could still take the hour for a break. And it can go out.
You can't leave it unattended.
Right, and like you said, if you put a sign out there, then it'll be nine, ten minutes long, let's go down and get your sandwich and come back. But it's, it's an official office and it's, you know, concerns me that, and I know how your regular, how citizens and how business people utilize register of deeds office. And, you know, it's not something that you, that you skin it. You know, it just costs, to me, this will cost later heartbreak and a phone call, we're on.
Absolutely, and, and also can cause a disruption for someone who's doing some research. You know, if they're in there to get in at zero, eight thirty, and they're almost there, but they've got to wait.
Whatever the other county got in place. I would be happy to have that.
When, how would the board respond to the suggestion? Why don't we name the time period, say from now to September, long time ago. And we use the as-needed approach where we, we didn't do the resolution as it sits, but on an as-needed basis, let Kathy know that you need, if you had to shut it down for the lunch hour, put the temporary sign in the window and, and let us know how that's working. Saying that would be her call when she gave that, the personnel lunch break. Could be her call, would be eleven o'clock or thirteen hundred or?
It also doesn't say. Well, this is not for every day. Resolution is not for every day to close the building. It's just for as needed, if needed, if needed. Why don't we, my thought, maybe we need to hear from Kathy of what problems she's had. I think we need to hear from her.
Do you think the board needs to hear her word?
I wonder if we could put something, instead of having somebody sit for an hour, if we could put a sign on the door that says the office is closed for lunch. If you need to eat assistance, please come back to the manager's office, the finance office or something. And if we kind of key, maybe we can at least go about somebody access to look at things. We wouldn't be able to do monetary transactions or really answer questions, but at least if it's somebody that needs access, they can have that access and they, you know, if there's other transactions, they have to wait.
That's a good suggestion. If somebody's there, then they can continue to stay there and do their research and someone else can tell me. They can make a call to, like I said, the county manager's office, so like, and it's, yeah. So I just came from her, but I'm supposed to be in this city and I really just like to look at this guy.
It's not going to fix everything, but it might help some, just a thought.
Okay, why don't we table this? I think that could be probably the best solution. That we will table this until morning.
I think my motion is to table the resolution for setting the register of deeds office hours. So I'll make it, Commissioner's ready.
Do you have a second?
I'll say, discussion.
Discussion.
Your motion, sir, you said the next meeting. Is that going to, I wish to make sure that's going to give enough time to?
Get someone heard.
No, to, to, to bring it back. Do we want to bring it back the next meeting that quick or? I'm trying to prolong this. You didn't say March.
Right, I, I said, uh, March.
Okay.
No, I'll, I'll mark on the motion to March.
Mr. Freeman, would you agree that your? Okay, a motion has been made in second that we table this until our March twenty fifteen meeting. All, any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it has its table. Okay, budget amendment twelve.
Budget amendment twelve is just a budget, some grant funding that we have received through P C G. There was a scrap grant that was submitted on behalf of Gates County from them. We've received the funding and we send it out to them. It's a pass-through grant. There are no county funds involved. The grant that we've received was about thirteen thousand dollars and I budgeted more in case we get more money in the second half of the year, but I won't have to come back through this again. But today we've received just over thirteen thousand dollars and passed it through back to P C G to handle that.
We are expecting more.
I don't know. That was dated April three, September. We may or may not, we don't always get these grants. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. So if we're lucky enough to get another one later in the year, then hopefully it'll be within this amount and we can pass it on for it. If not, I'll come back with another.
Is there a possibility that they could, uh, be a voucher for funds to have them come in yet? They've got an expenditure allowance for twenty thousand and we received thirteen.
No, they don't get the money until the grant, the grant funds come to us. We don't send them any money until we receive the grant funds.
They don't request money.
No, they don't request it. They request the grant, they do the grant paperwork, the state distributes that money to us and then we disperse it out to them. So they don't get any payment until we get grant money.
P C G does all the grant paperwork.
That's right.
Okay, the budget amendment is for us. Do we entertain a motion?
Abute.
Second.
Motion has been made in second and discussion. All right, all those who are in favor of this budget amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's passed. Okay, nine one one.
You have before you a letter from Herman Weiss and Hollywood's, actually let Herman give you a very brief overview of the nine one one R F Q that was submitted and the results on that.
Good afternoon. As you're aware, from the last meeting, I thought we had submitted a R F Q for a next generation nine one one telephone system. We publicized that in the paper. When we got back yesterday, the bids closed at noon. Two bids were called to us, one from Central Lincoln, one from Wireless Communications. Yesterday afternoon at one o'clock, we sat down here in the courtroom, myself, Natalie, Sandy, and the representative from Wireless Communications was here. We opened up the bids and went from there. As you can see in the letter, I included their numbers, that their bids were. Upon further talking afterwards, we made the recommendation that we go with Wireless Communications. So I'm coming to you just asking you a question to be able to go with Wireless Communications and proceed forward with this project.
Well, this was laying on your table this morning.
Gates County Emergency Services. So what we have to do is to approve the, to award the bid, I mean, award the project to Wireless Communications, is what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have a lot of for you, and this is the one that we really wanted to do more for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we have had issues with the old one. Okay, we'll entertain a motion?
Aye, sir, I'm, 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 I'm motion.
To award the contract to Wireless Communications Incorporated. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second, a motion has been made in second and in discussion. Okay, the motion for us is to award the wire, um, to Wireless Communications the bid for updating of our nine one one system. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, passed. As soon as can you get started?
As soon as I get done with here, I'm going to call in.
Okay. You have to sit.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And if you walk back, that room is, did you get that moved?
The old commissioner's room is where we're moving the nine one one center to. As you're aware, we have the big conference room table in there. That has been so moved over to the new, the old courthouse upstairs. Hopefully within the next day or two, we will be moving all the chairs out of there and once we.
The four two for boxes, what?
They're closed still, I got not moved. As soon as we get all the chairs out of there. As soon as we get all the chairs out of there and everything cleaned, we're going to do some repaving in there. We have actual nine-one-one furniture coming, they are expand-to-sit consoles, so they raise them lower. We've also, with our grant money, purchased two actual nine-one-one chairs, those have been received. But the furniture for the nine-one-one center will be installed on twelve and thirteenth. I have computers that are ready to be installed along with a new server, along with a new recorder, so my next project was the telephone and the radio system. So once we get those two underway, we'll get that installed and we'll be ready to go.
Herman, the television set on the wall, the black screen, was said, putting up a planning board to consider GIS map, where is that?
For right now, the fact name, but right now it has to stay in that way because the planning board, the discussion has been, they'll meet over at the extension office, they do have a computer that I'm sure that we asked, and a TV mount, we could use that, and then once everything is set up, we have to move that over to the courtroom so that they can have meetings there and use that in that room.
Well, back to you, and can't wait to see our new system.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Um, I think this is probably opportune time because Jennifer, I think, might take a little while for, uh, twelve or thirteen, that we take a twenty-minute break for one...
Man, God.
I'm sorry, that's not in our personnel records. So, thank you, we'll be back at this quarter to two. That's what we got next one. Let's go. And we're still in the new business, the car is a lot or a major subdivision approval for Ashley and Gloria Taylor, Mrs. Batiste, Mrs. Batiste will, uh, our plan director.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, this project comes, is coming before the board, normally a one-lot subdivision would not come before the board. The only reason this proposal is coming to you guys is because this is, according to ordinance, you can make any, you can only make two cuts out of any parent tract. This subdivision puts this parent tract well over the minimum requirements because the Taylors did do several cuts out of this parent tract along Lee Rick Road, because that whole area was one parent tract. So this, this one's, um, lot is coming out and it crosses into a major subdivision. We did take the, the one-lot subdivision to TRC, we did not receive any comments on, on the, on, any disparaging comments. The Taylors do, do know that there are water meters on the, on the parcel, that they have provided an easement so that the individuals who, the water meters, individual homes that the water meters belong to can still have access to those meters without having to go on to private property. So easement has been provided for that and taken out of the lot so that it does not conflict with the, the cutting, the subbody of this, this parent tract.
And this is going to be given to the church?
Um, they are not one hundred percent sure, but actually, yes, it is going to be given to the church, but they are not one hundred percent sure what the further use of the parcel, of the home is going to be. They did discuss using it as a parsonage or as a community center and some other ideas, but they are not one hundred percent sure exactly what they're going to do with the home.
This shows an existing building on this lot?
Yes, there is an existing home.
Is anyone living there now?
No, it is vacant.
No, it's not.
Not?
No, there is a caretaker.
The dotted line is that they set back?
Yes, sir.
And the little corner that's set off, that's the easement for the board leaders?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's that little, little square or five? I can't read it, it's so small. I'll show you. I'll see if it's one story, two story.
It's separate time.
Is that separate time?
It's just separate time.
I started to say that, it's too small for my eyesight.
Definitely.
Okay, is this just separate time in a drawing field?
You said that the property had been cut up, so it's, it's been cut since the Taylors own it?
Yes.
No, it was cut several times by Mrs. Riddick.
Right, right there.
I see that the landlord has had that, we approved this subdivision?
Yes, they do.
The Taylors just recently acquired this property in a family settlement after the death of the matriarch.
Was it thirty-eight acres? Was it a thirty-eight acre?
No, they, they got the eight acres that was left. The original thirty-eight was owned by Riddicks and split up over the years, but what the Taylors received from them in the final family settlement was the eight acres, this is the lot, on which they're now putting one acre out.
So all the tenants had that cut out on opposite side of the road?
Yes, ma'am. That, um, that was created as an easement to access the back lots.
The lots back here?
Yes, ma'am.
We're checking private residence, leaving it there. I can give you a little bit of history on this, I did just work on it, I'm going to say anything, but this property all belonged to a lady named Rosa Riddick. She died, a lady that lived in Lynch, got the property at that time, she had the whole thing, and it was on both sides of the road. She proceeded to cut out three lots on opposite side of the road and six, six lots on this side of the road. This, actually, the Taylor boss got this last property, which was eight acres, because that is the subdivision, although that is a lot, that's left in ten acres, so that kind of does a lot, and this comes out of the eight acres block, so there's been so many a lot either, but this is a major subdivision. And of course, they'd set back around, of course, the actually sitting there, and was put there a long time before we ever considered having any ordinance to do, to just...
Did they, that home, was it nineteen twelve?
I would want to hear that.
Chairman, I, I would make, I would make a motion to approve the subdivision as recommended by the chairman.
Okay, motion's been made, I'll hear a second.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made in properly second, any further discussion? Okay, all those who, we are voting on the approval of the subdivision, I mean approval of the Ashley and Gloria Taylor, um, lot, and I make subdivision approval for that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Ms. Batiste, you want to keep that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Batiste, you're still up, and you want to come to us about comprehensive land use plan overview?
Yes, ma'am. Before I really get into that, I know this is a little bit unsolicited comment, but I would like to make the comment on the presentation for the joint land use plan that the Navy is proposing. One thing I would like to say is, I think that, well, number one, I never met those people, they have never come to the planning department to discuss or ask or inquire about what the county may have planned for, in terms of doing a comp plan, or any kind, gather any kind of information from us to find out what we're looking at doing, what do we have in mind to do for ourselves. And I, I'm not real pleased about that because if you want to offer to do a joint land use plan, then you should at least find out what the community is doing or not doing. And in addition, my last comment, I would like to say, the number one thing that we discussed when we were talking about the comp plan during the joint meeting was that the county commissioners, the planning board, and the board of adjutant were in tune to having this plan be directed to the county, for the county. The plan that they're proposing to do, from what I understand that they're saying, is going to cover this whole area. Is Gates County going to get the same consideration as current health, equipments, and all these other communities that they're offering? I don't believe that we will get the same consideration in the plan that one of these, one of the larger, quicker developing communities will get. So I, I just want to, I just want to express extreme caution when you guys think about what you want to do in getting involved with this plan.
By your promise.
Yeah, we appreciate you keeping an eye on it.
And as discussed during our, our joint meeting, I prepared an overview, a little more detailed overview of what a comp plan is and the elements of a comp plan, and how I envision we go through that process. The first thing that I suggest we do is we do a request for proposals. Once we pick a consulting firm that we feel is adequate and meet the needs of Gates County, we do advertisement in the newspaper, in public pages, and on the county website to announce to the public that about we are doing a comp plan and we would like community participation from the beginning. Afterwards, it's, thank you.
I'll just quit.
Okay.
I got to work in front of you.
Once we, once we have the advertisement and get some, some interested citizens involved, because not only do we need to have elected officials and representatives from the various boards, we need to have interested community members participate during this process, as well as other department heads, so that we make it a well-balanced, we have a well-balanced representation. I think the board, the committee needs to be at least no more than ten people, ten voting people. Of course, the meetings will be open to the public and the public and anyone interested in having some kind of say or voice in their opinion are invited to attend any of the meetings, so we'll keep the announcement in the paper and on the website when the meeting, what the meeting schedules are. Once we form the committee, start getting the plan formulated, have individuals come from different areas and discuss what we need to be looking at in terms of environmental health, what we need to be looking at in terms of natural resources and protecting the scenic beauty of the county. Once we get the plan done, we have a community, we go out and have public hearings, informal public hearings in the community, do workshops in the community to let people see, this is the plan, this is what we're, we're looking at, please tell us. Part of the plan will also be a future land use map, designating where we would like commercial to go, because commercial, commercial needs to be kind of taken into, put into context in terms of what's the good property, the prime property for commercial development, and prime property is having adequate road access, having water, if the, if the use needs a lot of water, things of that nature, but not having commercial development placed in places where it's completely inconsistent with the, with the area and how it's being developed. Once we do, go through the community process, we come to the, we go to the planning board for a recommendation and come to the, to the board of county commissioners for final approval. And once the plan is enacted, we can turn to the last page, we can enact the plan and start working on getting those, getting that information placed into the, placed into the, to the different ordinances. Once we look at what we have in terms of updating, maybe putting, maybe coming up with a UBL or some, some other zoning ordinance where we combine everything into one ordinance and use only have one book to just, you know, instead of separate ordinances and having to go from book to book and having inconsistency between the books.
Okay, um, one of the things that I have looked at, and they mentioned, you know, the CAMA, we're under, we are a coastal area, and our CAMA plan, the one that Mr. Belgium showed me this morning, was done in twenty, twenty-three.
Yes.
But have we revised that in twenty-eight?
That is, and what, like I was saying in our joint meeting, that is considered our land use plan, our comprehensive land use plan. It's a comprehensive land use plan with CAMA enhancements, and that's what we'll be doing again with this one. It'll be another comprehensive plan similar to the one that was adopted in two thousand and four with CAMA enhancements.
Well, I know we need to do that every ten years, so twenty, if it was two thousand and four, two thousand and fourteen, every five, yeah, I really thought, I was on the planning board in the two thousand and eight, I thought we revised it.
We just voted on, we leave it?
Maybe we just voted, I want to go back and look at those minutes if we have them, we're not going to have it, but if we have them, the two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine to see, because it should have been, of course, the front page was not updated then, if, if we had it, but I'm really thinking, and I'm going to call us a couple of people who were owners when I was, because I thought it was updated, but we've got to do that as well. So would this be done in this process as well, working on?
It'll be all, like I said, that is, that is a land, a comprehensive land use plan. It just, it just states CAMA land use plan. It just, it just states CAMA land use plan. It really should say land use plan with CAMA enhancements. Um, cause it is a comprehensive land use plan. It did take into account all the general aspects and all the general elements of a comp plan.
I think, I think that the issue is that we have to do that. We have to do a comprehensive land use plan with CAMA. Coastal Area Management Association said that each county, they had, each county had to go through this, um, so that they could determine, you know, proper usage of certain protected waters and areas and so forth. So, I don't think we went into this one like we're going now as, as a mandate. Yeah, yeah, we were really getting down as a tool at that time. It was, it is a tool, but it was, it was something we did to try to satisfy the requirement that came down for all the coastal area counties to implement. But this approach here, we'll be looking more to what, what each county needs and how it's going to get their response.
Yes.
And along the way, are we thinking, Jennifer, that along the way in doing this, we're getting ourselves up to date with the CAMA requirement?
Yes, cause there have been several changes, um, to CAMA that we have not, um, done any updates to the plan to.
Address.
Address.
So, um, in completion of this project, I guess our five-year delay would start from there going forward?
Well, this was approved in November of five, but this is required by the state of what we just talked about, so the public state grants, very important expenses in current, I would think, and also the Admiral, Admiral commissions have been put in to follow the grant. There was a Coastal Resource Advisory Council when this was done, and they were advising the Coastal Resource Commission to get it done, but it, it is a state mandated thing and it, and it says it is to be updated every five years. Uh, the land use plan will look ahead for the next ten to twenty years and be reviewed and updated every five years. Of course, they'll say shall be or might be or maybe, it says will be. And that is, if you read through this, it's pretty well specified in Gates County. It's pretty in-depth and specific to Gates County. It's a pretty good report.
So, so we might find some dollars to.
This was done, this was done by Community Plan Collaborative Incorporated. One of the county hired to put this together.
I can say this, I did speak to the regional planner, um, over at the coastal, coastal area management, um, who, they provide, at that particular time, um, they did have grant money, and I did inquire of her whether they still had any grant money or offered any grant money, and she said, no, that they did not have any grant money to do any comp plan updates or new comp plans. Now, it's not to say that there aren't any other sources, but I know that they do not have, they don't, they don't do the grants anymore.
I'm just thinking, yes, it is required, mandated with Chair One County.
Chair is by the way, being a Chair of the County.
Well, anytime we could get a few dollars to help offset the expenditures.
It might. This goes back to two thousand and five, and we, the fund was hired to do this. Now, we may not find minutes, or we may not find paperwork or certain things, but we might go back and see how much money was paid to that group to just give us, you know, RFPs, might give us a, just a rule of thumb to see what we might be.
Yes, equation all of that.
Yeah, ten of you could give this a start.
Oh, yeah, like, call us.
That was before San Diego.
Jennifer, I was thinking our main objective was to go through line by line our subdivision ordinance and our zoning ordinance.
I would like to do the land use plan prior to going to doing that. Um, what I'm gonna do, what I would, my, my, what I would like to do is finish getting the ordinance subjected in terms of the general statute, um, cause I've, I've done all the text amendments that were adopted, um, since two thousand and seven and incorporated that into, to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and the manufactured home ordinance. Um, and then while we're working on the, the comp plan, doing the text amendments to bring it up to general statute, um, in accordance with the changes adopted through the general statute. Once we have the, the land use plan and we actually have a blueprint of where we want to go, then we start looking at the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance and start looking at, okay, we have these goals and objectives. What do we need to change in planning to meet these goals and objectives? But first, we need to figure out where we want to go and the steps we want to take. And this land use plan is gonna give us the where we want to go and the steps we want to take to get where we want to go. Then once we have that, a vision of that, doing the ordinance to make sure that, to get the ordinance to match the goals.
So, do we need to approve the report with the request for proposal?
I have prepared a sample, well, prepared a request for proposal. It's something running in there.
Is that for February? Is that in the, uh, two thousand and fifteen?
Is that what?
Is, is that submission scheduled?
Um, yeah, well, actually, the request was, is that? Just post that in the chat.
Yes.
Where is that? Uh, I was gonna say, um.
It's a bold.
I've got, I was gonna take your, I've got a document in my email. That will pull up right now. I, I, I already read it.
This is what you would need to approve today?
Yes.
If it were approved today, would you be changing your schedule in the coming months? Enough time.
I really think that, um, I really think the twentieth is, is enough time. That'll give, uh, two weeks, um, for, for them to get the proposals again. Um, unplayable, Davey, I think that if there's enough time, we can push it back a little.
Actually, you're okay. Blow yourself off to getting, you know, something to choose from.
Right. That's the good thing about the plan this year, we put it out today.
They're anxious to.
Oh, yeah, especially, especially consulting firms around this time. They get a lot, yeah, they get a lot of work at the beginning of fiscal year and not so much towards the end, cause most of the people, most, most communities put it out at the beginning of fiscal year.
Certainly appears that with the scope and the conditions that you outlined here in your document, that covers everything, as I would. I just have one, one suggestion, I think that, uh, in the beginning paragraph, we would want to be consistent in saying a new comprehensive land use plan, add the word land consistently, comprehensive plan, I know we're talking about land use plan, but, but, uh, and then, do we want to replace the current, current two thousand and four CAMA land use plan or are we gonna enhance and, uh, and update? Uh, because we, we have to have a, a, quote-unquote, CAMA land use plan in place for CAMA act.
But the CAMA is what Jennifer was saying, CAMA is gonna be in this comprehensive land use.
Yes.
But then we have to have a separate doc.
No, no. It will be, and that's why, if you read in the second paragraph, uh, where it says, "In addition, as a, as a coastal area management act community, it is important that the plan takes into consideration and meet all applicable CAMA regulations." So, they, you know, consultant is gonna know that they need to unfold, um, the CAMA regulations into the general land use, app, land use goals and recommendations and information that they present in this plan. Um, doing a, doing a comprehensive land use plan is, I'm not gonna say it's simple and easy, but relative, in regards to having the CAMA enhancement in it, a typical land use plan is easy and simple. Having taken into consideration of just the CAMA is gonna make it just a little, a one notch more stringent and one notch more difficult for them. So, we, we need somebody that, we need a consultant that has, um, experience doing CAMA, and that is one thing that, um, that when we get the proposals back, that we will have to look for, how much experience they have doing CAMA land use plans.
I guess my question is, maybe I didn't say it clearly. CAMA will accept as our CAMA plan one that is, um, embedded in a law document.
Yes, yes. Um, cause many, um, many communities, if you look at the, um, their, the CAMA website for the area, um, many communities are doing updates or new plans.
Well, I think everybody's on the same gun.
Yeah, so the only thing we will really have to do is, we'll have to involve them in our process, and once we get a document, we have to send it to them to get their blessing on it, and then, um, you can go ahead on them.
And you will, uh, contact the CAMA community and find out, uh, what updates they have given them the last several years so that they will have it.
Yes.
We won't send a document to them and then find out later.
Yes, uh, she has already forwarded me those, um, the document, and there's several, there are several other, the whole act is on the website, which I need to finish printing out, but she has sent me the major, um, changes that they have done or they're thinking about doing to the plan.
Well, we have to do CAMA.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I do not do that. If we could do both at the same time, it would be more cost effective.
Yes, CAMA does, does it at the same time. This report has everything in it, this is that.
I mean, we got the update, the.
Yeah, but I'm, before we go and hire you, another consultant, this was done by a consultant, and I would like to see the committee that we're going, well, we partially formed another day anyway. The committee had, at least have a meeting again, get that, a few points of consensus from them before we go and hire outside people to come in here and tell us what we're going to do in Gates County. It's, this, I mean, this one has the Gates County Division statement, of course, it's ten years old, but it doesn't change much, but it has everything in it that's actually in this. Just to take the time, look for population changes, highs and trends, land development, water quality, economic conditions, everything's in here.
I think what you're finding in that plan also is that they have designated concentrated areas that are residential and are potential, uh, commercial.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that has, that has changed, or, you know, some of it may have changed, or, um.
I, I don't, I'm just saying, you need something, but I didn't see this just scrapped or saw it from scratch, you know, I don't think that's necessary. Nine percent, nine, nine percent of what we need.
And I have a question, Phil, that I don't know too, Jennifer, and that is, in, in contrast, or is it in contrast at all with Army Corps of Engineers? Is that gonna be adopted with that, with CAMA, or do we have to be careful with that?
Um, I'm not sure about, what are you saying, like Army Corps of Engineers regulations?
Their, their regulations just as a, you know, to coastal land.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're gonna, my goal is to pull at many entities, cause really I don't know what, uh, um, is required right off the top of my head by Army Corps of Engineers. I don't really know what environmental health requires, cause their regulations change. Um, that's why I would like to unfold those, um, those entities into this process to make sure that the document that we put out or that we develop is as comprehensive as possible and in, in circles as many disciplines as possible. Because when we're trying to do things, um, I want to make sure that what we're, when we go to update the zoning ordinance, that we're updating it properly. We don't have to go back and update it in six months or three months and then having to go back and forth. So, I want to, I want to unfold as many disciplines as possible so that we get the best, um, best plan possible from the beginning. So, when we go to do the updates on the ordinance, the ordinance is as comprehensive as possible.
Um, Commissioner Phil. You're questioning, questioning, Jennifer, in any way, okay?
No, not, no.
You were, but you are questioning whether we need to go with the, um, RFP at all?
Yeah. I'm, I did, I got this by reading it, and I really had never read it before, and, and just reading it very quickly, skimming it, actually. It's a very good document, and it is ten years old.
In particular, it's Gates Ca, it's Gates County CAMA that you're looking at, not the generic one. I guess.
Yeah, this is, this is not for this county.
So, if we didn't do the RFP, we would take this document, bring it before the committee, and drill down in it, but first of all, then we have to get, we'd have to ask CAMA for any updates, to send us a list of any updates from two thousand and five to current.
Okay. In order to tweet this out.
The Jennifer studies.
Yeah, we have this, just had it printed on you. Jennifer, is this, is it doable in that version? I know you want to, I know you want to do it right, and I want it to be a good document, and I appreciate that. Don't be able to draw my questions, don't answer them.
Well, I would say, I would say, my whole thing about it, okay. With the, with the, with new technology, we get better information all the time about the land, about soils, what can be done, what can't be done, where this all changes. And as you may note from dealing with FEMA, floodplain designations can change, they move. That document is ten years old, and I'm not saying that it's not a good document, but I'm, I'm saying that we really need to look more and get it more updated with the current information. We need citizens to be involved in hearing about and being involved with the plan and process and finding out. and finding out what are their ideas about different things. Most of those goals in that, in that document were not done. I don't know why, if, if they were just so far beyond what staff were, was able to do, or they weren't applicable, or whatever. But those goals are over 10 years old, and they were never done. I think we need to really have in mind, vision is figure out what are our goals from here to, to 2020.
Let me just chime in and say that I think, I've a couple of words in my little mouth, but this committee was to take the first five pages. This is part of our work. A consultant's already provided a document, outlined it, they've sequenced it, and basically they would go over this and see what's changed. Of course, a lot of this technical information, I don't know if you have access to all of the technical information that's available about, what our land, land types and flood areas is a full. But I foresee that even if we had a consultant, they're going to go through this document, they're going to see what's applicable, what's not, what has changed. And really what we're talking about is a, is a step-by-step work process that's going to involve some, some hours of reviewing and comparing information. And for this committee, if you've got that much time, you know, you can get it to some time there, you know, a couple of hours, a week, to try to accomplish something that's relevant.
And I would like to add, also staff time. Right now, I'm down in the Code Enforcement Officer, I'm getting complaints that I have to go out and review. I mean, if I could, I would, and I'm not trying to short my duties, but realistically, the things going on in the planning department, it is overwhelming with GIS, Code Enforcement, ain't keeping up with the planning in terms of just processing applications and giving information, doing, looking at self-delays. It all sounds, on paper, it all looks one, two, three, but in some instances, it's ours. I'm having, right now, I'm having to do work at home on the weekends to get this proposal together to, for you guys today. I did it over the week, over Mark, who came kindly weekend. So, I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot of work, and like I said, just meeting the camera regulation, it's a lot of work.
We can send a request of proposal, and it won't cost us anything to do that.
And I think, I think this should reduce twice a request proposal because we have the other approved document, and basically, you know, there are going to be...
Anybody who, anybody who responds to the request is expected to be five years of that's old.
That's true, you know, of course, we have paid their, you know, their experience and knowledge, but, you know, I see it as a, as a task oriented, the job is, is going to be meticulous, it's going to require some man hours, and the thought process has a lot of information, and you're going to need to make decisions on it. So it's, and we could do it, but, you know, how much time do we have to be willing to get into? On the same thought, it seems to me to be over, call it less time than they're expecting to tweak this, and solve the scratch.
Well, but as Jack said, we send out an RPO, we don't, that's just getting proposals to see what price is. Um, we could see how much it would cost, and, and as Mr. Jordan did say, a lot of the work has been done. It, and of course, if it works in this, if they can read through that document and say, okay, and then that's changed, and go through all the highlights, that's changed, that's changed, we know, he could cherry pick and figure out what's done and what, and should have an impact upon the price. And whether you call it a revision of the camera plan or a comprehensive land use plan, you know, I think we could at least put it on, see what comes back, and if so, either ballpark, we can do, we can ball back and send out something else.
And, and, and we're saying here to prepare a new comprehensive plan to replace the county's 2003, 2004 camera land use plan. We really tell them right there, it already got put in place, 2003 to 2004, and so that's one of the first things obviously they'd look at, to see what they've got, and this is brief. You know, it's, it's kind of like a new construction versus rehabilitation, you know, tearing down your buildings all the way forward, putting up, you know, first team, so they don't have to ream that wheel here, and just take this and go with it. Signing it's out, and I guess, like I said, see what, see what's out there, let's go with the request of proposal, and see what they say, and then come back to the board and decide what we want to do.
Because it doesn't cost us anything, we haven't lost anything, we just lost camera. Do I entertain a motion?
So, do you?
Motion has been made, and separate that we send out a competent, a RPO for...
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, RFP for a comprehensive plan proposal overview, or comprehensive plan. Any discussion, because motions could be made for a couple of seconds. Okay, I'll lose the papers there, I'll oppose. Okay. See what's in the cover. Thank you. Okay, next item, nursing home advisory committee request for a stipend of $50 per member per month in accordance with, according on ground stack of 131E dash 128L. And as you saw in your packet, on page 138, it clearly states, nurses and community shall serve by compensation. But, but, but they may be reimbursed for their actual expenses incurred by them performing the duties.
Right. I'm a chairman, if you will. I've heard this in the board, and I have in the past, as an ex-official member of the advisory, because it's the end of history, and the chairman may, kind of felt like I was always an ex-official member, but I did not attend all the meetings. But this is a board that is a mandate to the county to, to appoint this committee, we have to have it, it's a general statute requirement, it's for the best interest of our residents at the nursing homes, and they do spend some time there, they have monthly meetings, which involves travel. They do do, I would say, I would think that they probably do weekly visits, and some do, do more than one day. They do check on the residents, they do go around to the rooms and see what, you know, what's going on with the hands, grievances, or whatever, because that's what's required of them in the general statute, as well as the instructions and guides as provided by Elmar Commission, Commission, um, button. So, you know, considering that, the travel, considering, considering the use of computers, paper, ink, phone calls, those are actual expenses. Now, how do we quantify that? Well, you know, to quantify, you would have to have a detailed records, but for a monthly meeting, if you figured 10 miles, one, I don't know if everyone has 10 mile one, but we should be able to put some of them stipend in place that would cover actual expenses for travel, and just labels, things like ink and paper, and phone calls, or whatever. If I had to, you know, maybe it would fit here, you know, actual expenses, if we can estimate them, rather than having a detailed record, we just said that if we allow 80 miles per month for a member, essentially, we will have two nurses, one nursing facility and a sister nursing facility that we are mandated to have committed to serve, if we get around 80 miles per month at the current rate, and that would also include possibly $5 or $10 for ink, paper, phone calls, previous, and, you know, that would certainly cover $50 a month as a stipend for their actual expenses.
Well, I don't have problems with mileage, but, you know, actual expenses, that's a little dicey in my estimation. I use paper and ink on a lot of my committees, and that certainly don't cover good ending for that. But it's, that's a pleasure forward, concerning this. Also, the person has to be sure that, are all these going every week? Because I, like the DSS board, if you're not playing, you don't get paid.
Right.
And Admiral Commission, if you don't go, you don't get paid.
Right. I would say that, you know, if we could implement something like this, that the chairman would need to submit a voucher to the county stating that these members were present during this month or meetings, and if they're not present, then certainly they would not get a stipend for actual expenses.
My own question is, we have a lot of boards, and currently, we give money to two, the plan board and the board of adjustments. Do we open the door to the all boards?
Well, I'll be mandated, in other words, this is a mandated...
Some of them are, such as the child fatality task force that I received an email about the other week from DSS.
We're mandated to have one.
Yes. They are required to be quarterly, and that's how they found out there was a vacancy that the county has to fill, and someone in the program department filled that position. And there's a list, I believe, of not killing DSS employees, I believe there were around 12 people to serve on the board. And that's just one example that is mandated in the statutes, and actually, it's two committees, but in Gates County, they meet as one.
Have we appointed?
We appoint some people to deserve on that committee, yes. We can appoint them to five.
You want their task group?
They are tasked with reviewing, random, they randomly select some of the cases that are in DSS, child protective services, review all the processes, and then if there's a fatality, they have to review all of that information as well.
And that's quarterly, you know, we're looking at monthly, plus we're adding another facility to them. I think the substance of, you know, this is not something that we, we're coming and saying, well, let's, let's do this, I mean, we've been asked, I mean, they, they know what's involved, and, you know, certainly, they're satisfied indeed that we have, and, this is what it takes.
Well, if you look once again, each of the minutes should quarterly visit nursing homes that serves.
Does your standard, they need monthly?
Right. And it's monthly.
Or each official quarterly visit.
Those are, those are visits, they should quarterly visit, personally, and they are required to visit at least quarterly, and they, many of them do it more often. It says, you know, visually, they may visit the nursing home it serves whenever it deems necessary to carry out its duties. But I, you know, I guess the thing, it is kind of, you know, it's, it's something that we have not been able to ask, you know, the board may want to, we may want to just, just ask them to have someone present to, to justify, you know, these things, I came up with it, I'm aware of, you know, based on the requirements of the general statute, if they would provide justification for this conversation I asked for, they, they've asked for it.
You know, in there, number seven, page number six, she uses the word pleaded, and that pleaded stipend, and she makes us aware that other boards appointed by us are being paid, and she uses the term equal freedom.
Well, that's what I'm just saying, that we appoint other boards.
Right. Do we have, now, how many different boards are being served, or how many different facilities in the county?
Melissa has all of that information.
From what I can gather, there's probably around 30 boards that either a commissioner sits on, or we appoint a citizen to sit on.
Do this for one, don't we have to do it for all?
That's what I was thinking.
Well, we're already doing this, so...
Yeah, we, we already, we already do that. That's why I asked the question about the task, what, what they were tasked with, did it, you know, just having the name on the docket, because if you, to me, if you're tasked with something that takes you away from your time, and requires you to be somewhere specific date and time, or to go to check on the people, to check on the facility, you know, I was trying to put value to what they, they did, other than the decision-making that they might be faced with.
Oh, I, I, listen, I'm not, I mean, it's important for someone to go to these facilities, maybe all the ads and gears and spots in these facilities to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing for operations. It's interesting, I don't, I don't remember, I haven't seen a report from them before.
What required?
Yeah, but I don't remember getting one before.
I think it's first one I recall seeing.
Yeah, I think this is first one I recall seeing, kind of interesting.
I think what happens is, I think they have to give it to the unvocated president for Elmar Commission to be over there, so... So, I think they rather this time through commissioners, so that we can see. I guess this is justification of what they're doing.
I wanted to, does that have anything else under item number seven? You had a quick, we're looking at, we're looking at number six. The lady who prepared the document, Ms. Lynn, she's, she found it, somebody had told her something, so she's witnessed it. I mean, there's considerable thing in the document.
You can, you can go down there. I won't say anytime, but you'll see them down there. In about all of the long time, you'll see some of them down there. Talking with residents and talking with the director about issues that, you know, some of that they might have. A lot of times they put on activities for, for residents. Kind of something like, if their home tour, so they carry them along.
So they give this to the unbu, and I guess he looks at these deficiencies and requires them to change, or does he pass it on to somebody else? And I know that's not what we're trying to decide.
But I think the unbu has the ability to provide recommendations to the state as well about the, their home can exist or the teachers they serve by, but I think they have the authority themselves.
Right.
But certainly.
They can bring in, call in the state to investigate.
Yeah, how, that's how the issues are resolved to the state. Cause I know hospitals, it's a joint commission that comes in and does survey the hospital. And such like the charge of the hospital that's there.
Well, I know some facilities that they have, there'll be, there'll be this, you know, the state inspectors come in and they talk to the patients, some of the patients, or they talk to a family member of the patient. And, you know, writing up their reports. And you certainly can go on the state website from Department of Social Services and all and see what it's rated and what problems they were, or if they are under. There was one in Eaton where our students used to go to do some of the, take in some of their hours that were in our nursing program. They could no longer go there because they were under, I don't know exactly what it called, they were under probation, they were in, in probation. So students could not go there to serve their hours because they were not certified.
And their home court rating.
Yes.
Based on a lot.
And you can go outside and see what the ratings are.
And I can check if you would like to table this. I can check and see what other counties are doing. I do, I have been informed that two other counties are paying them a straight stipend. But looking at it from where I'm sitting, if the state statute says serve without compensation, but may be reimbursed for the amount of actual expenses. I'd be interested to see what other counties are doing.
Again, they'll quantify it. I mean, you know, you can quantify it. If we, if we'd say it's, you know, it's ten miles for each member of one life, that's twenty miles a month, they're doing it every week, we won't write it down for them. You can quantify it, but it, and that can vary. But they would be specific to what actual expenses and not for, for compensation.
But then the question also becomes, looking at from financial side, are you going to allow them to turn in every trip they take? I mean, I know what they have put in here, but if it's worth it such as, you know, it's ten dollars a trip or whatever, well, are they going to try? And I'm not saying they will, but there's always that possibility. Would someone try to take advantage of that system?
And we said it at fifty, that's where it's quantified. I mean, anything over that, you know, is not, is not authorized.
So you're saying if it's, if it's fifty dollars, it doesn't matter if they make one trip or ten trips that long?
If you want, it's based on them making ten trips that long. And if they, if they make less, then if, you know, in our system, they should, they should let somebody know. And say, no, I'm not, I'm not making that many trips. And there again, I think, like I said, by what other county is doing it, can have them justify it. But they need to tell us how to re-justify, you know, the actual expenses based on what we're restricted to.
Yeah, cause I, this general statute, this general statute.
Yeah, but it's an actual expenses and, you know, actual expenses are partly letting the party involve, but serving your mileage and, and, you know, build supplies that you use, you know, using both our energy and certain allowance for the room.
I think I may, I spoke with Deborah Shear yesterday, who's the unbu for this program. And she knew that this topic was on the agenda. So she said, if after today's meeting you wanted more information, she would be happy to come and meet with the board at the next meeting. And she also gave me the counties that are close by that do provide some type of financial reimbursement or stipend. And both of those counties have a process in place that requires submission of paperwork. And so, I mean, we can, if you decide to. Chalhoun and Curta were the two that she gave me right off top. And I have contact information for who handles their paperwork.
She didn't give you a dollar now?
She did not. We had a pretty brief conversation yesterday, but she is available. The board would like to speak with her.
I think if you had her come to the meeting and basically give us the justification of how it's, how this is going.
Okay, so we need to entertain a motion to table this until we get additional information.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to table this until additional investigation and information can be brought for our board in the next session. All those in favor of tabling this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed. Okay, the next is a resolution to, are, in support of the future interstate destination for US Highway sixty-four and US seventeen between Raleigh and Hampton Roads, Virginia. You have a copy of that in your book. And it's pretty straightforward. This is something that, you know, Admiral Commission has been, in the form of like doing, thought hopefully it would increase economic development because if we had a roadway or interstate road, Hampton Roads, or like ports in Hampton Roads to, to get businesses maybe to look at putting facilities in those related, neighboring counties.
There again, that is, I'm missing that document. I guess it's some.
Last page of tablet.
Tablet.
Last page of tablet.
Yeah, definitely, it's tablet, I will come here and throw him up this.
Yeah, I mean, I, this document kind of fumbles some, but it is wonderful because all papers stayed on.
Just a couple pages.
Yes, I know. This resolution is in support of future interstate destination for US sixty-four and US seventeen between Raleigh and Hampton Roads. My only concern with this is that US seventeen is to the east of us, thank you, I'm trying to steer abruptly, to the east of us and sixty, I mean, so it doesn't come through Case County, doesn't touch Case County, whereas it does go through Camden, Curta, Passat County, Chalhoun. You know, we all got eye to eye.
Matt Cherry, I understand it's exactly your statement. I can assure you that we, this thing is not going to stop. As we, we're turning down.
No, no, I mean, I just, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think it's great that we are trying to work together as a region. I think we have a bigger impact than going solo. I mean, I'm not.
It was nice that it came right down.
It was nice that it came through.
Matt Cherry, I move that we endorse this document.
The resolution has been made to endorse.
And I'll second.
A resolution has been, a resolution made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution is in support of future interstate destination for US sixty-four, US seventeen, Raleigh, Hampton Roads. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, so we can get that. You know, the owner's got it in hand with a twenty-five year deal. Okay, to the fun topic, commissioners' appointments. Thank you for, I have, I asked when I saw this, since we have three vacancies to fill commissioners, I asked, and she's presenting to you, just send me by email who's serving on what, so that we can have an idea. Now, I would say, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, Mr. Jordan, would you not agree that historic, for us, we are not meeting.
Like consider them ad hoc meeting here?
Well, you know, we have that, as it is, as called, I'm not sure if we could disband it.
We have disbanded it, we have, have leave.
Right, well, I do certainly love to meet.
Okay.
The corporate extension board. I was not appointed by this board, but I was asked by the extension director. I think they needed a commissioner on it or whatever, so I do serve that board. I think they meet quarterly. I haven't been to, meeting in seven, three, four, five months. But I do serve that board.
I would say that I don't mind serving, taking one of these or, um. Now, I will say that with the Tri County Animal Shelter, we put on here it meets quarterly. However, that can sometimes be flexible. We might be a little more often once they receive an RFP back about some building that they want to construct or review that. But since I started work in July, I attended the first meeting in January.
And when did they meet? During the day or not?
During the day, whenever, last meeting, was it two o'clock? No, four, three o'clock in the afternoon, we met meetings.
You know, I know that some cannot meet during the day. You know, I can take that one or I can take PCG, I mean, I can, whatever.
Why does the PCG need two meetings? The county's got you.
Well, actually, solid waste, I guess, but they meet you that same time.
They meet at the same time.
I was the commissioner on it and then county manager was the office.
I'm still on the action, there were, but there were two boards of information that we received, but the two commissioners.
I think two, it was Commissioner German and Commissioner Cora for the two. And then we appointed you, and then when Commissioner German came off the board, I didn't realize he was serving on it. It wasn't one of the boards he had given me that someone would need to be appointed to. So I guess, few years ago, we did have two representatives.
Also, we needed that second vote, thanks. Cause if you remember Commissioner German said if something came up that we were in favor of, of those biking and dumpsters for civic organizations, then sometimes it's nice to have the second vote. I mean, two votes.
Is that a PCG? Is that a, a meeting during the day?
Yeah, it's in the daytime, it's packed it up for, I'm meeting in that, and I spoke about it last week, and they're meeting in, in March, I'm not sure which day yet or which time.
Is it, but it's not?
Both, both of those solid wastes of recycling will be the same, one right behind.
And is that Melissa City or where?
They didn't, it didn't say.
What do y'all want to think?
I haven't attended the meeting.
It's been at, I forgot what, the hall building over there on the river, over on the east side of seventeen, so we had two over there, and then the third one was placed kind of behind the.
Mountain, everyone?
No, they, they were only, there were one right behind them, and then we had not heard of another since June, I believe.
I think you went to one in June, right before I began work, and then there will be one in March.
June and March?
And then last year, dang, dang, dang.
Now, I do get some, I mean, I get updates from Brad and from Ann.
Now, on the ground, talking about recycling, that's something we need to publicize and promote as much as we can. It costs us for every piece of trash we put into the dump, for every piece of recycling we get paid for.
Right, that's something. We really need to publicize that and get articles out and paper out. I'm sort of, I'll, I'll volunteer to do the land view.
And the animal shelter, I was just informed last week when we had that meeting that there was supposed to be a commissioner on the, on that committee. We were not aware of that.
Now, county manager, I don't mind, Matt Cherry, I don't mind serving on that. Do have some interactions to the sheriff's office.
Okay, Tri County?
Yes, ma'am.
Billy, are you going to, are you going to remain, you're talking about Billy remaining
That leaves us that, the aging and adult services task force could be appointed to serve at whatever term, meaning appropriate.
I'll believe.
You read that?
I don't, I don't. Just do your rest as well.
They didn't say, and Melissa just shook her head that she wasn't giving that information either. And that is something I have seen, was not talked. And then Melissa's been trying to contact a lot of these committees to find out how often they meet. Is there a set meeting date or is it like some of the others, just whatever the need arrives?
Do you know the chairperson of that one?
I don't, I don't have my home notebook with me, but I do not know.
And that is through DSS?
It runs through DSS and their DSS director can usually communicate with us.
I think I've heard of.
Can we, can we just kind of not do that?
We can ask for more information.
I think we probably need to have an idea of what you're signing up for.
Yeah, especially the days, you know, Tuesday, that only, there are a few tonight. I would think it's a calendar so.
Okay, we'll just wait and see about those. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Ray Freeman to the Tri County Animal Shelter and Linda Hoppe to the PCG landfill board?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Well, we took one team. Okay, that brings us to the citizens' comments. If there are no citizens here, if it would like to make a comment. We'll start with the commissioners' comments, and I believe we started at the end of the table last time, so we'll move on. We'll start with Mr. Felton, who will go right up.
I don't have anybody comment too but Warren. Glad you hear Warren.
All right, I, uh, I'm thankful for those that did show up today, although it's been a terrible meeting. I'm thankful for those who came and observed and participated in our discussions. And, uh, just look forward to further county participation as we move forward.
Could be here again today, could be here to work with the fellow board members, county manager, and, uh, just, uh, like the concept of working together, moving forward in a better county. And I particularly want to thank those who came and participated today.
I also follow the comments of, uh, the all commissioners, thank y'all for coming. It is important to have citizens' participation. I think we have a better county and we would have more people participating, and we thank you.
I, uh, would like to take the opportunity to praise, uh, certain county manager and, and, uh, our quarter for keeping us involved and keeping us up to date on the items here. Also, thank the commissioners for the input and the good discussion that we can, so thank you.
Okay, uh, at this time, we've been pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven, we will enter closed session, considered legal, economic, development, real estate, and personal matters. But we'll do that as soon as we have a motion and second it, then we'll take a five-minute break.
Motion to enter closed session. Second.
Motion's been made to second it, that we enter closed session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So move. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're out of closed session. And we have one item to bring forth, uh, I'll ask our clerk to read.
You can entertain a motion to authorize the county manager to notify the landowner in writing that the board of commissioners will conduct a public hearing and notify adjacent landowners as required by state law for the purchasing of property.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the motion. Is that, do we, do we need to have a, a second?
So move.
Okay, yes, okay, so move, uh.
Second.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded, uh, concerning the motion of a, a public hearing to be held for the purchase of land, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move.
Who cares? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All those in favor of returning, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.